Hey, good evening, everybody. It's so good to see everyone here. Welcome to the May 9th, 2023 meeting with the Board of Education and Arlington Heights School District 25. I call the meeting to order. And Lana, could you please call the roll?
Niemann?
Present.
Scott Palato?
Here.
Jogi?
Here.
Serniglia?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Faso?
Here.
Okay, great, thank you. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. So today, we'd like to start tonight with the recognition that this is Staff Appreciation Week across the states, across America. And here in District 25, the Board is so grateful for our high-quality staff. We have across all our students in all positions. Thank you to our teachers and staff for providing a well-rounded education for all our students. We're so grateful and so blessed to have all our dedicated staff across the district. We appreciate all your efforts and care for our children. And I believe, Lori, we have a video with some special words of appreciation, right? Okay.
It should be Teacher Appreciation Week every single week of the year.
Why?
No matter Christmas break, because they do so much. I mean, where would we be without our teachers? We'll probably be still in kindergarten. Um, no offense to kindergarteners, you're awesome.
How do you feel when you're with your teachers?
I feel safe and good and happy.
I feel like glad that I know them and they know me.
She makes me feel happy. She's really nice. I like her.
Good.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
They make me excited about school.
Um, I feel loved because I know that someone wants to help me learn throughout my life. And yeah.
Because I love them. You're my favorite teacher. Because I love my teachers so much. Because I like them so much, they're gonna miss me and go on high school next year.
A job of a teacher is to teach kids.
Sometimes we have some troubles, so they help us.
One of my teachers really helped me read really well and a lot, and it really helped me grow as a reader.
In elementary, I moved from like a whole different country here. And that teacher, I'm so grateful for her. She, because I moved from a different country, I didn't know the language and stuff. And like, I was struggling and did everything, and I mean like everything, to help me out.
I just really like how our school like works together to help. Like, when we have like field day, everyone works together to help. And like, for movie nights and events, like the whole school has to work together and set everything up. Like, that's what our school's like. It's like a good, hard-working team.
Yeah, even like, there's so much more than teachers. There are janitors, principals, um, assistant teachers, uh, so many things.
I think it's important that you have other teachers for other needs so that the school can be a good and respectful school.
He helps clean up our school and he helps, he helps with, like, if someone, if we didn't have him, he wouldn't, like, we wouldn't, he wouldn't, like, take out the trash for us, he wouldn't clean up our classrooms, and our classrooms would be like a total mess on the first day of school.
Uh, if someone gets hurt, you can send them to the nurse.
The office staff are also really, really nice.
They help with like checking you in and like they help if you're late, they give you like a pass if you're checking out. They can help your, like, they're dropping off your lunch, or if you forgot your glasses, like you can, they like tell you like that it's here and they call your room.
And I also really enjoy specials because there's always so much to do. I really look forward to library days, gym days, art days, um, because there's always, there's always something new to do and it's awesome.
I just wanna say that teachers are the best people to teach you about stuff.
It's really important to appreciate teachers because we don't realize that, like, we don't sometimes realize how amazing they are.
Um, our teacher is the best of all of us.
Thank you, teachers.
Is there anything else you want to say about teachers?
Yeah, next year, I am moving, but I, I'm still gonna appreciate the old teachers that I have, that they teach me. And I, and I will still learn more better things and I will have fun.
That was such an amazing video. Thank you, Adam, for conducting those very special interviews. And it's so great that our strongest advocates for our teachers are our students, and we have so much to learn from our students. And in those videos, I know as education advocates, we have strong advocates there, but I heard the word "love" like four times, and that's really special, right? There's some really strong emotions and care that our students have for our teachers because of the high caliber of teachers that we have. So thank you definitely to all our teachers. Now, we're going to be welcoming a former educator here. The Board now welcomes Kim Dyer, who will share a short presentation in appreciation for being able to utilize District 25 facilities for various Science Olympiad events. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. Hi, so I've been around a little while, first as a parent, then as a staff member, and now as a retired neighborhood person who can't leave District 25. But Science Olympiad has been a huge part of District 25 for over 30 years. And not every community is as welcoming to our organization. We're a national organization in the state of Illinois. We have hundreds of schools. And in order for our students to have places to participate as a non-for-profit place, we have to be really careful with our money. And District 25 has been very supportive. So it doesn't cost the taxpayers money for you to be friendly to us, but it doesn't cost us building rental. So I just want to say thank you for your support. People who don't know what it is, there's 23 events in the middle school division, and students participate like you would on a track team in different events. And in the elementary, which we would love to get District 25's PTA to support us and get some coaches for our elementary students, we are at 10 events right now. So kids can build, they can study, they can do different things. And what we really think the most important part of Science Olympiad is the community we build. It builds friendships between kids on the team, and some of these are the kids who are not interested in the same thing of what you think most kids would be interested in that age. So it's not that hard to find somebody to play soccer with, but it's not always that easy for kids to find somebody to do science with. And they get to find somebody who has similar interests and share that time with them. It does extend their science learning. And we don't have a lot of variety of ways to spend a lot of time extending it that way, and this provides that opportunity. And when we say it builds community and relationships, because you usually have one coach working with a really small amount of kids, two to four, you spend most of the school year working with them, and you really get to know them. And then they work with different kids in different events, so they get to know those students really well. And we have community volunteers. We have retired teachers. We have current teachers and staff members. But when it says multicultural and multi-generational, not only are you interacting with your own community, but because you allow us to use our buildings, we're able to invite people from all over the Chicagoland area. So kids might see school populations that don't look the same as the school populations in Arlington Heights. We've had, Ms. DiMaggio's had her father coach, we've had grandparents coach, one of my kids helped me coach a year. So when I say it's multi-generational, it really allows students to interact with a lot of different people. I'm gonna key in on one in a minute. In the last 15 years, we've hosted six Middle School Division B invites at South Middle School. Each had about 25 teams, 15 students, do the math, that's 2,400. We had two elementary invites, one at South, one at Thomas, each with about 150 kids, so about 300 students. Then the world of COVID came, and we had to do remote competitions. But this year, District 25 opened up again graciously for us when we were able to go back into in-person competitions. And the folks at Thomas took on something I couldn't even imagine, 59 teams of about 15 students, so that's 885. And then Patton allowed us to use their building for our first in-person elementary Science Olympiad. And one year, we also hosted a coaches clinic at Dryden. So overall, you can see the impact was in the thousands. And again, the building was donated, so if you rent a building, you pay building usage as a non-for-profit. The district didn't charge us that, but we do pay for the custodial fees, so it doesn't cost the district, they're not paying anybody, they're just letting us use the building. And the event covered, so whatever we charge people to compete, that covers the custodial fees. And it's a, we're certified insured non-for-profit, so it doesn't cost you any liability. So we just want to say thank you, and because of this, over 3,200 students were able to do all of these fun activities with their family members and new friends. And this is a picture, this is at South, one of the invites. These are more Division B, but I want to key in on the corner picture on the right, Andy Anderson over there. He will be starting his 30th year with us next year as a volunteer. He's over 80 years old, and he's coached for over 30 years at South Middle School. And I think that speaks to dedication, but also the amount of fun. You must be having fun to get something back from that. And the students he's coached are amazing in what they've gone on to do. I can't say enough. This is also at South over the years. This is the first elementary invite ever in the state of Illinois at South Middle School. And this is what the gym looked like at Thomas this year with 59 teams. And obviously, I had South people taking these pictures, so please don't think that I was focusing on one school over another. And this is the commons at Patton this year when we were able to return in person. Currently, I help coach at South, and I serve as the state chairman for the Illinois Science Olympiad Elementary Program, which is why I'm so hoping that the PTA people here hear me and say, "We could sure use that as a committee on PTA." And how far can they go? I can't go on with all of what they do, but this last summer, I wanted to highlight Derek because he was the most recent one. Derek worked as a part of a team for Georgia Tech. They won a national award. They worked with Mayo Clinic, and they developed a device that when you use this vascular closure device at the carotid artery, it helps neurosurgeons prevent patients from stroking out. And he did this as a senior in college. Oddly enough, he is now employed at Medtronics, where my son, who's just finishing his MBA, will start. And last summer, Jimmy, on his internship, got to meet up with Derek in Minnesota at Medtronics. So it comes full circle. We keep in touch with all of our former kids as much as we can, but we want you to see that what you're allowing us to do encourages kids to go on and do so much. So I just wanted to let newer board members who maybe haven't seen it because of COVID, and those of you who have been around, to know, we haven't forgotten all you give to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Kim. Kim, we're so glad that you are back. You know, I, as a parent, I've seen my own daughter really benefit from Science Olympiad, and Kim was there. And then when she was leaving, the kids were like kinda close to tears. So I'm gonna tell your former students that you're back, and if they want to volunteer, now that they're high schoolers, right, they can come back. So, and I know our PTA is super gracious, so maybe a meeting with them. You see, Meg's already like, she's on it. And anything to benefit the students is their mission. So I hope that collaboration happens for the sake of our students. Thank you again, Kim. So we'll be moving on now. I'm so excited. We're so excited again. The Board loves seeing all the smiles that come to our board meetings, and it's the recognition of our Arlington Heights All-Star Student Athletes, right, Dr. Vine?
Thank you, thank you. We're so excited to have everybody here tonight. This is our second year of having our All-Star Athletes, and this year, we doubled in size. We went from just track and field last year to basketball and track and field this year. And we've also increased the number of our athletes. It's just amazing. Part of that is due to the dedication of our athletes, but also the dedication of our coaches and our volunteers and our families getting to all the practices, coming to all those events, seeing all those smiling faces, working together. Not only are you working on the physical skills and those athlete skills, you're working on that perseverance and just that teamwork. So it's just amazing. I know that our head coaches prepared a little video that we wanted to show tonight and just see a little bit of what happened at our track and field event. So we would like to just congratulate all the individual athletes that got to come tonight. We even got a little prize for you guys, so if you want to come on up. I'm not sure exactly who's here. I see a lot of friendly faces, but Marco Bonacera was one of our athletes. Dean Barodick. Aiden Bowers. Adam Wazinski. Grace Kennedy. Matthew Turzic. JT DeAngelo. Lily Franchi. Will Hatfield. Will Henkel. Andy Huang. Devin Jetla. Eliza Kim. Grace Padoda. Leah Perez. Grace Petrie. Ava Ravelis. Giuseppe Scaravelli. Brady Simpson. Reagan Stalin. And Amanda Wazinski. And again, like I said, these wonderful athletes just couldn't have done everything they did without their amazing coaches. So we had head coach Colleen Higgins. And then our crew with Corinne Duffy. Carol Gollimo. Grace Grant. Kathy Holbrook. Allison Kehoe. Nikki Koch. Annie Lee. Amy McAllen. Rose Stadola. Liz Zavitz. And then, just because of the wonderful rainy, terrible day that we had on Special Olympics, I wanted to mention some of our amazing teaching assistants and volunteers that came out, got soaking wet with us, and really endured that, that long morning, cold, long morning. Andy Beck, Karen Kulata, Amy Datalo, Abby Gro, Hannah Haberly, Emily Malik, Patty Malinkowski, and Jenny Mendikowski. They're just amazing people. So thank you, everybody.
Just amazing how many people kind of rolled up their sleeves to make it happen on that. I remember that day, it was a very, very cold day, so no thank you. And we're so proud of all our athletes. And today, I was telling our friend Brian Serniglia, our board member here, that he gets a gold star because he remembered to wear his shirt today. So we're very, so extra hand for him. But congratulations again, and thank you. And thank you for everybody for making this happen. It means so much to us to see you here and knowing that all these educated staff members, parents have done so much to make this happen. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, it's picture time with Adam. Okay, we are going to move on to board communications. And we'll start off with board member updates. Are there any updates that my board colleagues have this evening? I just have two. This, you know, last week on Wednesday was the Arlington Heights Memorial Library hosted the student art show, and it was just fantastic. And so many parents, so many students were out there, and our art teachers and educators, and so it was great. And so we really thank the Memorial Library for hosting, and they had great cookies for the students. I had one too, the chocolate one was really good. They have it again tomorrow evening, so anybody who'd like to attend from the community can definitely attend. So kudos to all our artists, it was really great. Moving on, we have Ed Redd. Any updates from Ed Redd, Stacy? Okay. And then I have no updates from IASB, and then NSSCEO. Any updates from NSSCEO? I know there were meetings. We have, Gina, we have a new committee person for that, and Gina is gonna continue as well. Go ahead.
So just a reminder that the NSSCEO Golf Outing, the annual golf outing, is on June 3rd, and there is information on the website to be able to, it's a charity event. So for all of you who want to grab your golf clubs and head on out there, we would love to see you out there in support of NSSCEO.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And then now we'll move on to the community input portion of our meeting. The public may address the Board of Education at this time. The opportunity to speak to the Board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the Board. The Board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the Board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the Board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow these guidelines. Number one, please address the Board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the Board President. Number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The Board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow to speak the maximum number of people, the opportunity to speak. And number three, please be respectful and courteous. And the Board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board and especially to our staff. The Board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment section, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. And on the blue slips, if you leave your email and contact information, our district will get in touch with you to follow up. Today, I want to say, we typically have two public comment sections, but we have a really long agenda, so hopefully if we get done by 10:15 tonight, then we'll have that second public comment section. But if we do not get done by 10:15, to respect your time and the Board's time as well, and to make sure that we get through all the business that we need to get through, we won't have a second public comment section, time permitting. So we have two comments. First of all, if I could welcome Ms. Mary Kay Baldino. Welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. My name's Mary Kay Baldino. I'm a resident of Arlington Heights and put two kids through District 25 successfully. And I'm also here on behalf... Sure. Thank you. Right, right there. All right, no problem. I'm also here on behalf of Moms Demand Action. We are a volunteer organization, grassroots, nonpartisan, and we are advocates for gun safety and for evidence-based policies that help in advancing gun violence prevention across the United States. We have 10 million members nationally, and we have hundreds of members of the Arlington Heights community that are part of our local group that I help organize and lead. And I'm here tonight to talk about school safety, particularly because of the School Resource Officer proposal that is on the agenda. Really, our group appreciates the need for school safety so much. We're living in a dangerous time with the proliferation of so many weapons in our towns and across the country. And this is why our group does the work that we do to advocate for gun violence prevention. It's for the kids, it's for our community. We do advocate, though, for evidence-based solutions, and that's what's bringing me here tonight. Reviewing the School Resource Officer presentation materials that were posted publicly raised many questions, and none of those questions were answerable in the material, so I'm really looking forward to hearing a robust discussion. First of all, why? What evidence brought the school district to this kind of proposal and solution? And how is that evidence-based? What other strategies have been tried to solve whatever problem the school district is trying to solution for? So for example, has the school district invested in education on safe storage? That's a really evidence-based solution on school safety. How will the school district mitigate the negative effects of having an armed officer in middle schools? There is a lot of research to support the fact that armed officers in schools do not prevent school shootings, and they have a negative impact from a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective on our children of color. So how will District 25 measure the success and understand if the outcomes that are achieved by having armed officers in the schools were actually part of that versus other kind of mitigation measures, like focusing on the school culture? So things that do work... So, things that do work that...
Miss Baldino, yes, I know that Adam shuffled your mic around, so I'll give you 20 more seconds.
Thank you. What I do want to emphasize is Moms Demand Action has a program called Be Smart for Kids, and we are eager to work with the district to help with educating parents and adults on school safety and gun safety.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. So, Adam, I think the mic's working, so it'll be good to go for the next speaker, right? We're just shuffling. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Baldino. The next speaker is Mr. Lipinski.
Hi there. My name is Ed Lipinski. And today, I'm going to read from one of the critical race theory books that are allowed in D-25 school libraries. It is called "I'm Still Here: Black Dignity in a World Made for Whiteness" by Austin Channing Brown. Page 22, "The Ideology That Whiteness Is Supreme: Better, Best, Premates the Air We Breathe. White Supremacy Is a Tradition That Must Be Named and a Religion That Must Be Renounced." Page 67, "By the time I graduated from college, I thought that I thought I was the white culture whisperer. I was fearless. I thought any future encounters of racism would rear their ugly heads like purple dragons. And I had no doubt in my ability to slay racist nonsense wherever I found it. I was so wrong. Far from an imposing beast, I found that white supremacy is more like a poison. It seeps into your mind drip by drip until it makes you wonder if your perception of reality is true." Page 105, "I suspect that white people really don't want to believe that we, people of color, know them too. They want to believe their proximity to people of color makes them immune. That if they smile at people of color, hire a person of color, read books by people of color, marry or adopt a person of color, we won't sense the ugliness of racism buried in the psyche and ingrained in the heart. White people don't want to believe that we sense the discomfort, hear the ignorance, notice the ways they process race, our bodies, our presence. We know them. We know they are racist." Page 106, "Black folks still have to be on the lookout for white fragility's cousin: white guilt. White guilt is like having tar dry all over your hands and heart. It takes so much work to peel off the layers, rub away the stickiness, get rid of the smell. Unsolicited confessions inspired by a sense of guilt are often poured over black bodies in search of their own relief." Page 116, "Ultimately, the reason we have not yet told the truth about this history of black and white America is that telling an ordered history of this nation would mean finally naming America's commitment to violent, abusive, exploitative, immoral white supremacy, which seeks the absolute control of black bodies. How long will it be before we finally choose to connect all the dots? How long before we confess the history of racism embedded in our systems of housing, education, health, criminal justice, and more? How long before we dig to the root? Because it is the truth that will set us free. The passages I just read create a distorted notion of American society and offend both white and black people alike. This book teaches children prejudice and categorizes people based on skin color. I depreciate an emailed response from each board member as to why each of you support this type of book. Thank you."
Thank you. We'll now move on to communications from district partners. And first of all, we have a PTA representing here today with Nicole.
All right. Good evening. Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
All right. So, in April, the Arlington Heights Council of PTAs celebrated our high school scholarship recipients at our annual breakfast. Nine high school seniors received a $1,000 college scholarship. One former Greenbrier student, one former Ivy Hill student, two former Olive students, two former Westgate students, and three former Windsor students all were awarded a scholarship. And if you were here, it was really memorable. It was nice to see the students back where it all began for them, and honoring the teachers and their loved ones who accompanied them. We also wanted to recognize two D-25 students who received additional awards for their submissions in the National PTA Art Contest titled Reflections. Michaela C., a Dryden student, advanced to the national level in the Literature Division for her titled piece, "Rolling Into Life." Also, a Patton student, Joe S., was awarded State Honorable Mention for his musical piece, "Heroes Reign." Congratulations to both of you. The PTA wanted to remind families to join when completing the 2023-2024 school registration process. Being a part of the PTA is a wonderful way to connect with your child's school. As a member, you are advocating for all children, providing memorable experiences for staff and students, and creating a sense of community with your school. So, keep that in mind when you register. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Nicole. It's an exciting time for seniors, wherever their path takes them, whatever the next chapters are. So, thanks for acknowledging some of them and all your hard work. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Next, we have ABC25 Foundation. Gina, any updates?
Yes. So, the foundation is busy. We are wrapping up our current year, and everyone is very busy planning for next year. And we currently have openings, so anyone who's looking for a new volunteer opportunity, we have openings across both the race team as well as liaisons for the schools. And we're always looking for help in various other areas, especially anybody who really wants to and loves to fundraise. We would love to have more people join. As a reminder, similar to PTA, to all of our district families, we would love to have you join and support ABC25. It's super easy. It's part of the 2023-2024... Wow. Registration, so it's super easy to join. And please remember that as the foundation, all of the fundraising that we do is returned back to our district in support of innovation and creativity in education, to our teachers' efforts of new ideas that they want to bring into the schools and to the classrooms.
Okay, thanks. Always great ways to get involved at the district, right? So, thanks for offering up another way, Gina. And so, yes, it is registration time. I remember seeing that email in my own inbox as a parent. So, ABC25, sign up for that, and PTA as well, right? Like, we have an opportunity to sign up for that at registration time. So, note to self, for sure. Next up, we have Alison Berg with ATA. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice shirt.
Nice shirt.
Tonight, I am an honorary member of Thomas. Even though I don't work there, I am going to highlight some of the awesome things going on at Thomas tonight. So, let's get started. Thank you always for the opportunity to allow me to shine the spotlight on a school. I enjoy it. It's the best part of my job. First, I'd like to talk about, to piggyback on what Kim already talked about, the Thomas Middle School Science Olympia Team had an amazing season this year. At Regionals, they had an unprecedented event where every single member, 30 students, won a medal in at least one event. The varsity team, along with a few JV members, qualified for the state tournament and competed at U of I Champagne Urbana in April, where they medaled in four events. So, congratulations to them. Moving on, the Pride of the Wolf Pack, making sure I'm on the right slide, is an organization that supports and celebrates everything Thomas Middle School, past, present, and future. Every year, alumni are inducted into the Wolf Pack at an all-school assembly. Additionally, scholarships are presented to graduating seniors. The Pride of the Wolf Pack is also set up to help current students by providing money for academic and athletic teams and clubs. This money is raised through several fundraisers throughout the year, including a golf outing each summer. Staff love to connect with Thomas alumni, with current students, by inviting the scholarship finalists, past Pride of the Wolf Pack honorees, and current honorees to the assembly each year, in hopes that their stories of success will help and inspire current students. Doozies was the spring musical over at Thomas. It was a great success. Sold-out performance, over 60 students involved in the cast and crew. And actually, some of them just came to perform at Windsor, so they were just talking about it to our Windsor students to drum up future, well, future students for not only Thomas, but also at South. Sports, the seventh-grade basketball team had an excellent season, finishing with an overall record of 14 wins and five defeats. The highlight of the season was beating South for the regional championship. The eighth, I should have read that first, the eighth-grade boys. You know, we love a little competition, even within our district. The eighth-grade boys' basketball team had a two-year career record of 31 wins and only three losses, and won the regional championship for the second year in a row. Thomas had 60 wrestlers join this year. As a team, they took first at the Hawks Tournament, first at the Viking Tournament, first at Regionals, 22 sectional qualifiers, and six state qualifiers. Very awesome. Congratulations to the seventh-grade girls' basketball team on a great season. Some highlights include participating in the Brave Challenge, hosted by Thomas Middle School, and South to raise $1,000 to donate to Special Olympics of Illinois, winning the regional championship against South to make it to IESA Sectionals, and finishing with a record of 12 wins and three losses. The girls' cross-country team showed up all season and led by example. They set their goals high, worked hard, and crushed it. As a team, they finished second in state, and Alexa I individually placed fourth in state. The Palms team this year displayed incredible effort, grit, and talent. From basketball game halftime shows to V show to competitions, the Palm team always worked hard to be the best version of themselves on and off center stage. Congratulations to Palm's team for their many successes, notably winning first place at the Thomas Middle School Dance Invitational. And finally, congratulations to the volleyball team on their sectional championship and being the first Thomas volleyball team to qualify for the state tournament. So, big kudos to Thomas on all their sports. Finally, I just want to highlight Student Council over at Thomas Middle School. They continued the Be the Good, which was their theme for the year. A group of students, in February, 40 members and 10 staff members helped pack over 34,000 meals with Feed My Starving Children. Student Council launched a kindness campaign, complete with a daily kindness challenge, and one morning, all 946 students were greeted with handwritten notes on their lockers, which you can see right there. Student Council members supported four Thomas Special Olympians at a very wet and rainy Special Olympics competition. Not pictured here, Student Council made bookmarks and prepared a treat cart as part of Staff Appreciation Week. Today, May 9th, the Student Council prepared... Is that today, May 9th? Yeah, is it? Okay. Today, May 9th, the Student Council prepared dinner for the night custodians as a way of saying thank you for their hard work in keeping their schools clean. No pictures on that, but I can maybe bring them to the next meeting, because it's happening as we speak. And finally, the LMC welcomed an author, Maria Scriven, in March for an author visit to the school. So, lots of great things happening at Thomas. I love the opportunity to come and present it to all of you. So, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Alison. So, you have to catch the sarcasm in my voice when I say Thomas didn't seem like they were busy at all. Like, wow, so much going on. And I love the kindness and all the handwritten notes and the ripple effect that these students are, the big impact that they're making. Thank you so much. And kudos to Thomas and all our students. We'll move on to the consent agenda. This is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows: A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report; B, invoices; C, fixed asset disposal report; D, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of April 25th, 2023; E, resignation agreement.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Please, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gina. Lana, could you please call for a vote?
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Lana. We'll move on to student learning. It's an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
I got you.
Yeah, go for it.
Madam President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 through 2025 and 2026 e-learning plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Brian. A second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Liz. Dr. Becky Fitzpatrick will provide a report on the district e-learning plan. Thank you so much, Becky.
Thank you. So, just to bring everybody up to speed, you may recall that back in 2020, the Board approved our first e-learning plan. Illinois School Code allows for school districts to create e-learning plans. And for an important point of clarification, our e-learning plan allows us to make a decision on inclement weather days as to whether or not we actually want to use an e-learning day. So, you may recall some communication from Dr. Bine over the last couple of years, reminding our families that in the event of an inclement weather day, she would notify our staff ahead of time, so our students could take their devices home in the event that we might have an e-learning day. But also, the district retains the right to make that decision as to whether or not we'd have a good old-fashioned snow day, or we'd decide to institute an e-learning day. So, our plan that we're seeking to submit to the North Cook Regional Office of Education really is not too different from information that you would have already seen as a parent come out in our district. We have plans for our students to be able to use devices. It would be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous activities. We would use all of our channels for communication to let our families know if we would be using one of those days. So, we believe it's in our best interest to retain that option to be able to do so if the need came up. We would submit the plan and ask for approval for another three years. And in terms of anything else, really, things are pretty consistent. We did a pretty thorough review of our original plan. We made some tweaks a couple of years ago and really have kind of held on to those adjustments that we've made. Two other important things to note, on e-learning days, if a family is eligible for free meals, the district has a plan in place to be able to provide meals for our students that would need that. And we also have information for families that might need assistance with connecting to the internet on those days. Chris Fano has developed a plan for that. So, it would be our recommendation to the Board that we would submit this plan to the North Cook Regional Office of Education for verification. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick, for the information. No, I have some comments and questions, but I'll, if my colleagues have any questions, comments first.
Dr., may I, Madam President?
Yes, Kevin, please.
Dr. Fitzpatrick, you mentioned that the Board reserves the ability to determine whether to have a traditional snow day versus an e-learning day. Other than the factor of timing, making sure that both staff and students are able to bring home any devices they might need, what other factors help determine that choice?
Sure. So, it would be Dr. Bine that would make the decision for the district as to whether or not we would have one. It could include things like, you know, is this happening the third day of school? Are our kids ready to engage in e-learning? So, the timing of it would probably be crucial. I think it would probably depend on what has happened throughout the year. Have we already had to take a lot of snow days? You know, what does that look like? Do we feel like it would be very disruptive for our students not to have learning on that day? So, those would be some of the other things I think that we would consider in that case. I don't know, Dr. Bine, if you would add anything to that.
It allows us the opportunity to utilize an e-learning day. Again, only in place of an inclement weather day. There's no other time that we could say we're going to have an e-learning day. So, it really allows us to look at the situation of that upcoming snow or weather, and what's going on in our schools, and making a decision at that time.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I think, Dr. Bine, answer my question, but I want to ask it explicitly. So, I'm thinking of, for instance, like Election Day. Could we use it in that instance where it's not an emergency, it's not an inclement weather? Could we use it there?
No, we cannot. We can only use it in place of an inclement weather day.
Thank you for the question, Greg. And Kevin, I think this is more kind of... And Kevin, I, I think this is more kind of a comment and maybe a question embedded in there, thinking out loud here, but I think we know from recent experiences, right, with the COVID, and that the e-learning piece, right, we know that our students benefit most from being in the classroom. And so, I think we hear, some of us will hear, what, e-learning, and it may be a trigger for, in the community and parents and so forth. So, I appreciate that it's situational and that I appreciate that a lot of thought has been given to this and a lot of thought will be given to this before kind of taking that e-learning day to make sure the preparation, the digital readiness, if there is a, you know, digital divide issues and the decision made, what's best for the students' interest rate, knowing that our parent, you know, many of our parents work and so forth. But thank you for kind of really giving it thought before taking that e-learning step. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick. You're welcome. So, we are going to take a vote on this. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lana. But moving forward, we have Student Services and Diane Kafka along with Dr. Judy Hackett and Kristy Crabtree from NSSO will provide a report to the Board on the NSSO audit. Welcome. We have been waiting to, for this audit report, and we are so happy to see you here, all of you. And Dr. Judy Hackett, thank you for being here.
Good evening, and thank you again for, for having us. We're very excited to be here, but also honored to be co-facilitating with certainly Diane the audit of Special Services for District Twenty-Five. Certainly, all of you know the work here and the importance of the context of a strategic plan when we look at Student Services in particular, and we really see your, your current strategic plan is really the anchor of the work and really making sure that the work that we have done as part of the Special Education Audit complements that, goes maybe a little bit deeper in the area of special education, but is aligned to that work. I have been fortunate to be around for about sixteen years now. I've been in two other District Twenty-Five Special Education Audits during my tenure at NSSO, and this is a first time with Kristy and myself and Diane that we got to co-facilitate. The other ones was much more of a participant, which really appreciated, but we were able to get much more collaborative and engaged in the process this year. So, that piece was great. I would also say that it is unusual to have a district embark on Special Education Audits this frequently. So, again, a shout out to all of you for really embarking on that and taking the time to really, to really look at all the facets of the work that you do. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Kristy.
So, just as an overview of the process, how we approached this audit, we really started with the charge from District Twenty-Five and the Board through the strategic plan with several guiding questions for what information was sought through this audit. And we spent time over the summer planning most closely with Diane in terms of what are the specific questions to be asked and answered and what are the pieces of assessment or information that will help us answer those? So, really looking to line up questions with multiple sources of data to answer those questions really thoroughly and thoughtfully. One of the things that we quickly realized is with a topic like inclusion and good inclusive practices, we really needed a very clear, firm definition of what is the definition of good inclusive practices in District Twenty-Five. And so, we spent a lot of time, again, over the summer and the beginning of the school year, then reviewing research on what are some of the indicators that, you know, people who have been doing this work across the country have identified that we should be able to see and measure in a system that indicate high-quality inclusive practices across the gamut of the system, from the highest level in terms of planning, all the way down, you know, to the classroom, school and individual student and family levels. And really outlined and included in your summary report is that list of the best practice indicators that then we used to kind of expand the audit a bit from those initial guiding questions to tailor family survey, staff survey, leadership survey and artifact review to specifically measure each of those indicators so we could get a sense across District Twenty-Five which of those are fully in place, which are partially in place or in progress, and which are areas for, you know, beginning momentum moving forward from here. So, the first question that was asked and answered as a part of the audit is to what extent are families satisfied with the special education support and processes provided by District Twenty-Five? And the primary data source for this was a customized family satisfaction survey. NSSO has administered family satisfaction surveys on an approximately yearly basis, the pandemic years were the pandemic years, but on an approximately yearly basis with District Twenty-Five and some of our other member districts, we took some of the questions from those historic repeating surveys and we supplemented those with a lot of additional questions that were specifically aligned to those best practice indicators for high-quality inclusion as well as indicators of just really good quality special education services. And so, we administered that survey then to every parent caregiver of all of the students who have an IEP across District Twenty-Five via email, multiple invitations and reminders. There were also opportunities, we timed it very specifically with parent-teacher conferences so that there were in-person reminders coming from each student's IEP team to help encourage and engage families to feel comfortable providing that survey response. And so, in terms of the information that we got, overall, when you just kind of average the family responses across all of the questions, all of the indicators of, of high-quality inclusion and special education practices, eighty-one percent of families were reporting high levels of satisfaction across measures, and it was pretty consistent. There weren't like individual measures that fell high above that or really high, or very much below that. Some of the strengths that stood out as we looked at the information, school climate, scheduling of participation and family IEP involvement, all had measures in the high eighty percent of families reporting they either agreed or strongly agreed with the indicators that we had asked about. Qualitatively, we also included opportunities for people to share comments, and, and over and over and over again, families shared that they appreciated the caring staff, the exceptional support that their students have received and the clear communication from District Twenty-Five staff. And so, that was a theme that definitely emerged in terms of family satisfaction. Opportunities, and, and to be clear, these aren't necessarily low areas, they're just relative opportunities. Some of the scores around friendships and social relationships, this is something that's, that's hard for students with IP's, families of students with IEP's, and that was a little bit lower. We saw a trend as we looked at the information. Within the school setting, there are lots of structures and opportunities for socialization. It's not carrying over as much to the community and home. And so, we're seeing some of that in the school settings, lots of nice measures there from staff and family reports, but then it starts to, to not be quite as strong as it moves outside of that structured school setting that's a little less controlled. And then similarly, family, school and community event involvement was also a little bit lower, and we spent some time looking at this, this family survey data with a committee, an audit committee that Diane helped us pull together with District Twenty-Five leaders, District Twenty-Five teachers, and then Dr. Hackett and myself, looking at, you know, what are the family and staff survey numbers and getting some context around that. So, really contextualizing what might be some of the contributing factors to this being particularly high or this being particularly low. And then also, within context, what might be some of the initial high-leverage next steps that would eventually start to feed and inform recommendations for the audit? So, really making sure that the information was interpreted with a very clear lens, school to school and across the district, what's going on. And people identified with the, the family, school, community event involvement. In terms of school event involvement, it was a higher score, but the community event involvement was, was an area where more information is just needed for staff and for families. And so, leaning into how to disseminate and collect that for families. And so, the recommendations out of question one are pretty logical based on what you'll see in terms of strengths and opportunities. For friendships and social relationships, as the committee thought about it, you know, one of the most important things as the district leads into how do we continue to support social relationships for student IEP's is to really engage with families around this, to really understand from the family perspective, from the student perspective, what's important? What, what does social engagement, what do social relationships look like for each individual student, because it might be a little bit different? And then really working in collaboration around how can the families and the school continue to work in partnership around supporting that in the school setting as well as in the community and home? And there's a lot of opportunities leveraging the District's Twenty-Five Parent Academy offerings to start and continue those conversations. And additionally, exploring opportunities to leverage the existing structures and supports in school that are, that are successful for supporting opportunities for students outside of the school. So, really exploring how do you take the successes that you're seeing inside that school environment, moving them to the community and the home. Similarly, in terms of family, community event involvement, one of the things that we identified is that staff need a little bit more training and information about community resources that might be available for students to supplement what the school district can and does provide. Community resources are optional for families, they're, they're available for families to use as they're appropriate, and so giving staff information about what those are and how to language some of that for families to provide that information without necessarily giving like a recommendation, like you should do this. And including information about community resources in ongoing school and district communication, making it widely available and disseminated, and incorporating information about those community agencies explicitly into the ongoing District Twenty-Five Parent Academy offerings. So, lots of ways to just pay attention to getting information to families. And then the last category of recommendations out of this first question around family satisfaction is to just continue to explore options, and this is a theme that comes up across the questions, for increasing capacity to serve students in increasingly inclusive settings. Several families did comment that, that they're happy for the support they receive and they're really happy to have more and more inclusive settings. So, their, their priorities are aligned to the Board and the district's priorities in terms of continuing to boost that. So, maintaining that open conversation and then continuing to reassess family satisfaction annually, either with the entire re-administration of the survey across all of the items or with targeted items that, that the district identifies for targeted improvement and reassessment year to year. Just to get a sense of, are the, the action steps that are being taken within the district having the intended impact on family satisfaction as well? Great.
And when moving on to, to question number two, does District Twenty-Five implement an appropriate process for determining special education eligibility? When we think about the work in special education, it really begins through the evaluation process. And many years ago, as a peer monitor for the state, the training was really about compliance and really about making sure that the right steps were in place to determine eligibility for students. And one of the thirteen disability categories, they are still the same thirteen federal categories that when I started in this work many years ago, those are the same ones that remain. But the process thankfully has become much more sophisticated and detailed, more student sensitive, student focused, and, and so, as part of this audit, we really kind of dove into the artifacts. So, we looked at a random sample of IEP's specifically for the eligibility process, how it's documented. So, for me, looking at not having any sense of who that student was, but really kind of reading the history, looking at the needs that we're identifying, looking at the, the documentation of what the family input was, the processes, the correlation between your RTI and MTSS process and some of the, the problem solving associated with that, what kinds of interventions were used for students. All of those things were considered in that, and then kind of the conclusion of that, did that align to the determination of eligibility? For every one of the random IEP's reviewed, that was evident. So, that's a very high reflection of a good process, certainly reflective of significant training and professional development for your staff from all across your, your district, and also reflective in, when we look at some of the district-wide data, each district has a district report card, and embedded in that are some of the statistics, if you will, some of the data on identification rates and then the trend associated. Again, we had a little glitch for the two years that weren't really trended because of the pandemic, but across the last five years, very consistent. And again, having been here before, that is very, that is definitely a positive trend. So, your identification rate is somewhere between twelve and thirteen percent. The state has done nothing but climb over the last same level of years, hovering around seventeen or eighteen percent. So, the downward trend means that your kind of advanced work in eligibility and supporting students is evident in that data. So, so that's really impressive as well. I took a closer look at the categories as well, and that too is consistent in terms of, many times, a district like this attracts students and families because of your services. That could be something when you look at students on the autism spectrum because you have a really good system in place and good resources and supports. That piece is evident as well, but really a very positive aspects of that. The other piece that is definitely a partner in that is the RTI manual and website. When we look at lots of other districts, the amount of detail for families, for boards, for people coming to your district, the amount of detail in your RTI manual and website and how up-to-date it is, is uncommon, but again, reflective of your team. So, a lot of specificity on that, certainly a lot of work on that. If you were brand new to the district, it would be easy to kind of pick up what some of those processes are in place and certainly apparent friendly information. So, all of those are very positive steps in terms of the data review. When we look at the strengths, again, the strong academic MTSS, again, that's reflected in the data that I just mentioned, and it is hard to do MTS well. It is, it is something that once you learn more about it and it evolves, you need to keep, you need to keep at it. You need to keep working at it, you need to make sure that your new staff is trained, that you don't think about it as a place or a precursor to eligibility, but as a foundation for the work that you do in your district, then that is evident. You also can see that the correlation between the eligibility for specific learning disability and other categories, that needs to be reflected. So, if you had very high numbers of SEL, SLD, you would kind of wonder if that, how that correlates with your kind of evolution of MTSS, and that's not. And one of the things that, you get a letter from the state if you are disproportionate, Diane doesn't want them, I bet Lori doesn't either, you have no findings. Again, that is a very positive reflection. That is one of the things that the state looks at when they, they look at district data, and you have not, no disproportionality across any of your categories. There's always an opportunity, and we see that, again, as a strength-based springboard for your work. And again, I would probably say this is probably true for many districts, is to really lean into the SEL aspects, the social, emotional and behavioral aspects of MTSS. We used to call it the other side of the triangle, now it's kind of all kind of morphed together, but we know how important those two together are paired. So, really continuing that evidence and, and that effort in really making sure that the SEL aspects of MTSS is as strong as the academic partner to that.
Support, multi-tiered systems of support.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that right up front. RTI, in terms of the evolution of response to intervention, was really several years back when really we started that journey at the state level and really as a, as a stepping point in terms of a process to really look at how students respond to interventions. MTSS is kind of the evolving piece, understanding that it's a whole framework to really provide multi-tiered, different levels of support across the whole district.
So, question number three then asks, is District Twenty-Five including parents in the decision-making process for determining educational placements for students with IEP's? And we had several sources of data. And we had several sources of data that we looked at to help answer this question. The first is in addition to the IEP, the random sample of IEPs that Dr. Hackett just described, we also looked at those IEPs to identify whether parents were in attendance at the IEP meeting and what meeting options were provided to parents. We supplemented that sort of like artifact review with six questions in the family satisfaction survey that are tailored to all families who might have a student with an IEP related to their involvement at different levels in terms of their knowledge, their invitation, their feelings of equal voice at the table, lots of questions targeting different angles on that, as well as two additional questions for families whose student had experienced a placement change, either a placement change to a different location because that's where the service was best provided for their student, increasing or decreasing intensity so that that tricky transition for students who need more or sometimes less support as they're transitioning through their educational career. So two additional questions for those families really targeting their feelings of involvement and engagement around that IEP transition process. And then in addition to that, we reviewed a new artifact in District 25, so newly developed this year and being used to guide services this year, our official District 25 guidelines for placement changes that include recommendations and and guidance to teams in terms of communication, the process to follow, how to ensure really that that goal of deep engagement with families at the IEP table and around these conversations is effective to support transitions, again, usually to a more intensive setting, whether that needs to move to one of your instructional settings in District 25 or to an NSSEO program or potentially a private therapeutic placement. So we looked at those guidelines to to see how they might meet the identified need. And the last piece of data, each quarter, at the end of the quarter, an email was sent specifically to the families who had just experienced that transition to usually a more intensive, but sometimes to a less intensive. So if a student's moving from an NSSEO program, for example, back to their District 25 school, they would also be invited, any kind of transition that changes location or significantly changes placement service amount. Those parents were invited to a personal interview with Dr. Hackett and myself. They all happened via Zoom. We could have done them in person, but Zoom was easier for families in terms of scheduling to just talk about their experience and to really get that qualitative information about what was this like for you, what was really helpful and supportive in the process and where it might be some opportunities to improve that transition process because we know that that's a, it's a really sensitive time for families and students regardless of the district. And it's a commitment in District 25 to ensure that that's a smooth supportive process for families. So looking at all of that together, when we averaged the family survey responses across those six questions that every single family answered around their engagement and involvement, 85 percent of respondents supported agreement or strong agreement across those multiple indicators of IEP involvement, which is very strong. It's higher than your overall satisfaction, very high level. In terms of the strengths, there's definitely high levels of parent attendance that showed up both in the IEP audit as well as in the specific questions targeting, like were the IEP meeting scheduled at a time you could attend? Were you able to attend your child's IEP meetings? Very, very high levels of parents at the physical table or invited to the to the virtual table if we're doing it by Zoom instead. Parents also reported that they had a really good understanding of their rights as a parent and a family of a student with an IEP as well as of their child's IEP services, their child's disability, what that means educationally, which really is the foundation for involvement. If you don't understand all of that nitty gritty, it's really hard to be a contributing, meaningful, equal voice at the table. So that foundation also exists. And also a strength is these new District 25 guidelines, this new document that was created and utilized this year is very well targeted to what families need, what we heard in those parent interviews and what we saw in some of that family survey feedback. This guidance is very well targeted to the opportunities to continue to evolve that practice and that support for families and that sensitive transition between service and location. The opportunities, so we have high levels of attendance, high levels of knowledge, slightly lower levels of family feeling equal partnership and voice. So that last level getting all the way to you know what's going on and you have an equal voice at the table, they were very, still very high, 78 percent of families endorse, agree or strongly agree with with these items. So relatively very high, very close to your average anyway of eighty plus percent, but a little bit lower. And so some opportunities to continue just to push to that strong family involvement. And then also we saw as expected, some slightly lower family feelings of involvement in the transition process between schools and programs. And one of the caveats to keep in mind here is that this data reflects families because of when the family survey was administered, who experienced a transition pre-guidance. So a hypothesis we're working from and that a follow-up family survey will help kind of confirm is that this guidance and these new practices in place will boost that score quite a bit. So there's already been some really strong momentum towards moving that up. And it wasn't substantially lower, again, slightly lower, but an opportunity just to make sure because it's such a sensitive time for families, that over time you're seeing that that guidance and these new processes really support that feeling of engagement as that transition process is happening. So based on those findings, our recommendations continue to provide the the support, the amazing structures and processes and practices and commitment to family engagement that exists in District 25 so that families are at the table virtually or physically. Continue to use those District 25 guidelines for placement changes. We think that really has a lot of leverage. And continue or consider providing additional training and guidance to staff on structures and processes to support that engagement at the table. So we talked about that slightly lower feeling of like having an equal voice at the table. Several staff members from District 25 have recently attended over the past several years a facilitated IEP training, which is specifically designed to cultivate practices in terms of protocols and structures for facilitating meetings as well as teaching people communication and collaboration strategies to engage in that. There are many other platforms, facilitated IEP just happens to be one that we've had regionally. There are lots of ways to approach this, but getting that training both to family, parents and families and to school-based team members really opens up those doors for what should collaboration look like? How do we communicate around differences in opinion in a way that really respects and acknowledges both perspectives and and finds a way to work through that together while keeping everybody's voice active at the table? So just some active training on that to really move those only slightly lower measures, just a bit lower to get to that deep, deep family engagement that that everybody's searching for.
And moving on to goal four, to what extent is District 24's educating students in the least restrictive environment, often referred to as LRE, in students' homeschools? How does 25 compare to other area districts while implementing inclusive practices? So we used a number of data sources for that. Again, this is both a qualitative and a quantitative approach. The artifact review that Kristi and I have mentioned a few times here was part of that review, certainly the random IEPs that we looked at, a lot of the artifacts on the website or in the department on the placement guidelines, but also the continuum of services provided. Then the district report card, the ISB report card that is conducted for every district, that is that EE code references the educational environments and that is, I think Diane presented on this this past year as well. It's broken down into groups where 80 percent and beyond and more, a student is in a general education. That's at the front part of the EE codes. And then it moves through 80 to 40 and below 40 and then separate facility and private day. So that would be the continuum of services. So we looked at the EE codes across across the district. We also looked at the historical trends for District 25 as well as other districts, certainly of elementary comparable size to District 25, as well as state trends. And it is again a credit and an evolution for this district. We really are hovering about 89 percent, maybe 90, closer to 90, of students that are in gen ed, either 80 percent of the day or slightly below across a school day. That is again a trend towards really reflective of an inclusive mindset, but really above many other districts and above the state trends in that. And you see that the state trends are identifying more students and then you see where the EE codes are, then that also from a kind of data perspective really highlights the kind of growth that has occurred in this district. The other thing to to note is that there are students, certainly in some of our NSSEO programs, primarily as a separate day program or program outside of your district. That trend has in one year gone from a 7 percent to a 6 percent, which is significant statistically for the amount of students that you have identified with IEPs. So that too shows again, that is not the state trends, even though there's been a huge commitment to inclusive practices across the state, we haven't seen numbers that reflect that at a state level, but we do in in District 25. So those are the two things that we really looked at in terms of that. Here are some of the strengths that you really have identified, continuum of services that are similar to other comparable local districts, that the educational environment codes overall are aligned to our averages and are more inclusive than our state average. The opportunity, we always look for opportunities. We are, we are thrilled to be such a great partner with District 25 and Diane's team, having spent a lot of time this year together. We have appreciated that partnership and really feel like the opportunity to work with students that are transitioning to minor from a District 25 school or back and forth from Timber Ridge, our alternative program that sees a little more movement because of the needs of the students in terms of intense behavioral needs. About 25 percent of the students from Timber Ridge return back to their homeschools as they, as their skills develop at minor, that trend is not quite the same, really students that have more intense instructional needs and needs for a high level of one-to-one support are at minor. So but the collaboration between our districts and NSSEO in terms of providing inclusive opportunities for partnering with typical peers, for the playground that we have embarked on with this district, for our inclusive playground for all initiatives. So there were a number of things. We see that certainly some of the work with professional learning and building capacity within your district is a goal we all share. And so that too is a part of the discussion on really continuing to foster more inclusive mindset practices. And that's reflected in your vision and mission for your district and also for your department. Yeah, I already covered that.
So then the last question, and this is sort of like the the summary question. So given all of this, to what extent is District 25 utilizing inclusive practices across all schools? And the way that we measured this is is really the culmination of all of the pieces of information that we gathered and cross-referencing each of those pieces of information to that list of best practice indicators that we developed over the summer and early fall and then aligned each of the measures to. It's included in Appendix B if you want to see item by item, what are all those indicators. But we looked at the family satisfaction survey. Each of the questions in that survey is mapped directly back to one or more of those indicators. A staff survey was also administered to all District 25 staff, from teaching assistants all the way up to leadership. Again, each of those items was mapped back to one of those best practice indicators. We supplemented the staff survey with a targeted leadership survey, asking really some of those specific systems level questions that staff might not even be aware of, sort of like behind the curtain, what's going on, getting some feedback from leadership around that. The parent interviews that we conducted with parents of students who transitioned between programs or settings and then all of the artifact reviews that we just talked about for each of the questions, as well as some additional artifacts, some of the the items in the best practice indicators just begged for an artifact, whether it was your staff negotiated contract, maps of the school and locations of classrooms, those types of things. And so Diane worked closely with her team to get us any artifact that might help us answer, ask and answer those questions. And so as we looked across that, you know, series of best practice indicators divided really into categories to help kind of could jump, put the information together into something that's understandable, across all of those measured indicators, this District 25 is implementing 69 percent of those indicators at a very high level, so high to all the way, sort of, you know, and and sometimes that's a measured 80 percent and above and sometimes that's a little bit more arbitrary in terms of like, are the are the classroom locations in a location that is close to, you know, the gen ed setting, same age peers? And it's sort of like a yes, no. So what we looked at in terms of strengths, each of the things listed under the strengths, every single indicator was at that high to very high level for District 25. So 100 percent of indicators were very high for the distribution and location of the students, the class types and teachers within the setting, so just looking at all that structural organizational piece. All of the indicators of school climate in terms of welcoming, belonging, acceptance were very, very high. Teaching and learning practices were off the charts, super, super strong. Student scheduling and participation, again, that just basic access, are the schedules created in such a way that students can participate and have that opportunity. Again, every single indicator was at high to very high. Effective IEP evaluation and progress monitoring, as well as family IEP involvement, which we talked about a little bit earlier. Some of the opportunities, so some of the areas where you had partial to not yet implementation, and there were really only two items that were altogether not yet, the first being specials teachers, so arts, PE, music, having opportunities to collaborate directly with special education staff in support of planning for IEP students. The structure just doesn't exist in the current school schedules and calendars. And additionally, the only other measure that was a not yet was specifically an ongoing self-evaluation of progress towards increasingly inclusive practices, which is built into your strategic plan. So next year, check. But the opportunities overall, pulling out from that individual item to the category level, overall, there are opportunities across systems and structures for collaboration. So in addition to the specials teachers having a specific opportunity to collaborate with special education staff around how to support students with IEPs in those classes, there are lots of opportunities and desire across staff and leadership for more intentional opportunities and more structure around collaboration, co-planning, understanding how best to support inclusion, really requires a lot of planning together of teachers across disciplines and domains. Additionally, an opportunity for professional development to support inclusive practices. And we'll see in the recommendations, based on the feedback from your District 25 Stakeholder Audit Committee, we have some targeted recommendations for where that professional learning might start in terms of what are going to be the highest leverage things to really include in that PD plan. And then additionally, planning for continued school improvement. So rolling this audit into an ongoing cycle of self-evaluation, reflection and planning over multiple years to just continue to iterate and improve from from this fantastic foundation to continue to move forward. So based on that, the recommendations, develop a multi-year plan aligned to your strategic plan to establish systems for ongoing reflection and improvement of your school and district-wide inclusive practices. So looking at that macro and a little bit more local level and including that as you already have in your District 25 strategic plan. Establishing structures and processes to enhance staff collaboration, specifically again, given the the feedback and the context that we were able to sort of mine from your stakeholder group, that Audit Committee. A couple of really important places to start are going to be to clarify and communicate the goals and purposes of this collaboration as it's set up so people know how to use it and what its intended purpose is and specifically framing it with regards to supporting inclusive practices. And then also identifying that there are many in many instances of really good collaboration already in place within your District 25 schools. So leveraging those structures that are already working very well so that you can kind of add inclusive practice conversations into that or use that to support the success there to support additional collaborative success. Additionally, that multi-year professional development plan, some places to start are building understanding of student IEPs across all staff. Special education staff are very familiar with student IEPs. All staff, however, don't endorse a strong familiarity with student IEPs. And so building opportunities for staff to really understand the nuance of IEPs and the disabilities that students might present in terms of how to support them in their setting. Additionally, the rationale and benefits of inclusive practices, so really shaping a culture and a value and a shared mission around these, you know, high quality indicators of inclusive practices. Why is District 25 so committed to this? What is the rationale? What is the reason? What does the research say about good inclusive practices? Building that into the professional learning, so it's contextualized for staff, why are we even spending so much time talking and thinking about this? And then building familiarity with the specific instructional strategies and best practices to support additional inclusive opportunities for students. And so what are those strategies? What does that look like? Having opportunities, you know, very specific to each staff person's role to build their sort of repertoire or toolbox. And then last, and this is a bit more specific, but it came out of the committee as potentially a high-leverage, easier-to-approach next step that might actually really support additional steps from there. A lot of students with significant special education needs come with either a one-to-one or a partially dedicated teaching assistant, so somebody who's with them by their side or very close to them for much of the day. And there's a lot of information about how best to support students in that one-to-one teaching assistant, or maybe not dedicated, but still in the classroom as a teaching assistant to support these students. District 25 had started some committee work around clarifying this rule, getting really good training to teaching assistants and to their collaborating teachers around how to best utilize teaching assistants to genuinely support independence. It's a bit more nuanced than it feels like at the outset, because sometimes you can over-support and undermine independence. And then planning for that fading and removing of support as students are building that independence. So really resuming that work that was really just put on pause because the pandemic. But really, picking that back up where it was is a nice step, and that'll also relate nicely to the collaboration planning as well as the PD.
And just to summarize, just thank you. We know that this was a journey throughout this year. We have appreciated working certainly with Diane and her team, the committee, and it is a time commitment, but also an energy commitment, certainly Dr. Bein and the leadership. The high rate of survey participation, both at the family and staff and leadership rate is extremely impressive. That shows, again, a commitment to that. And then just all of the responsiveness and collaboration throughout. So we want to thank you and also entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for that really comprehensive report. We really appreciate all the hard work that went in, you know, kind of Herculean effort. And I know I have comments and questions, but I'm gonna see if my colleagues do first.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I do have a few questions, but I first wanted to thank the panel for taking an enormous amount of information and work and research and putting it in a format that's digestible, that's, you know, understandable to anyone that's sitting here. There's a lot of clarity out of all that information, and I really appreciate the transparency with the data sources, so really connecting us to, here was the question where, here's where we found the answers. So thank you for all of that tremendous work. So just a couple of questions. On the survey, and I'm talking about the parent, the family survey, I think I'm referring to it properly, what was the participation rate? You talked about, you know, the 81%, the 85%. What was the participation rate?
So it's impossible to calculate, but what I can tell you is that, let me find this. Question one. There are, or were, at the time that the survey was administered, 649 students with IEPs. Emails were sent to every parent or caregiver email that was attached to those IEPs. So for some of those IEPs, it could be four emails that only represent two people, or it could be four emails that represent four people. And because the survey was confidential, the only demographic we collected was what grade is your child in and what building does your child attend. We can't get like kid by kid. We did get 280 responses. So 280 responses, 650 IEPs, it's a pretty good response rate. What we don't know is how many of those 280 responses is like mother and father, and how many are individual, like the whole family represents one response.
Right.
So I wish I could say we had a X percent.
Yeah.
It's impossible without the demographic data.
No, understood, thank you. But even those numbers.
Yeah, impressive. Yeah, 280 responses we're very happy with, very family survey, that was not short.
Okay, so then, under question one, and I'll apologize upfront, I was making notes, and if you address this, then I apologize for asking again. Under the friendships and social relationships, I know for myself as a board member, and I think others have heard, you know, an interest in the community, an understandable interest in services, you know, more services at their home schools related to those social relationships with their peers that are in their neighborhood. And I just, I wanted to ask if any of that bubbled up in this area of the survey?
It did, and we did disaggregate, I didn't report it here, but we did disaggregate by families whose student is placed in an instructional setting that is not their home school, and families whose student is placed in a setting that is their home school. And when we looked comparably at families of students in that instructional setting, so not their home school, they're in a different school setting with tailored supports to that student's needs, what we saw was that they were predictably somewhat less satisfied with their child's social networks. It was not substantial, from like 63% to 50%, so it's a bit of a dip. And on the other side, more satisfied with the supports they're getting for their students than the average IEP family. So it's that trade-off, and we had a lot of comments that specifically, when we looked at that qualitative comments from families saying, like, this is a trade-off that I know I've had to make, and that was part of the conversation at the IEP table in terms of, you know, what is most important for my student. I think the other thing we saw qualitatively, especially when you're talking with families who have moved to a much more intense setting, so whose home or neighborhood school was very much not able to meet that student's needs, and they were moving to like an NSSO setting, in those parent interviews, they actually said that in that new setting, their child was able to regulate in such a way that they were starting to form social relationships. So that was a theme we heard. It's kind of one of those like mixed bag answers.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, credit to the survey and how you've looked at that data helps us understand that nuance. Okay, under, well, I just also wanted to mention, I really appreciate the suggestion to leverage an existing initiative in the Parent Academy, just, you know, using what's already happening here in the district. Skipping to question three, and I think this might be for Dr. Bein, but the D25 guidelines for placement changes, I believe that was talked about, it was talked about, is there any more detail on like the development and just the implementation of that resource? Or, I'm sorry, or Diane, thank you.
Yeah, that was something that me and my department really got together over the summer and laid out those guidelines. We knew this audit was coming. Me, being in the district for many years, knew that we had previously had some guidance on that, but as we're looking at those families that are changing placements, and it's a big change for families, we wanted to make sure that the teams had that guidance to be able to say, have you looked at the IEP in this lens? Have you done fidelity checks, making sure that it's been implemented appropriately? What changes need to be made? Have you shared this with the families? Before we even start talking about another placement might be needed. And as we're starting those conversations, making sure that the family is involved in those conversations and going to observe the other placements, and really hearing the pros and cons of both settings and what needs to happen, so that they are really an integral part of that. So that was something we developed very early in this school year, when I started in this position.
Yeah, and sorry, we're gonna...
I was just gonna say, Diane and her team, and previously as well, our Student Services Department has some transition programs, like helping families from early childhood to the elementary grades. We have great support in helping families that are going from fifth grade onto the middle school, when they have students with IEPs. And so kind of what you referenced, taking those systems that they already had and saying, well then how do we create something to help families transitioning from one level of support to another if it's not a natural grade change, is what can help them take what we were doing and expand on that.
Well, kudos, Diane, to you and your team, because we're just hearing how impactful that change is on our students and our staff. And so I'll just finish my comments. I mean, I'm an individual board member making this request, and Dr. Bein, we've seen this in other presentations, but loving this presentation and appreciate in the future, whenever it is, if we can learn how, you know, when we see another presentation, oh, but this is an impact or a change or a, something we learned, and here's, from this presentation in the future. So we can always call back to it. But thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Greg, for those questions. Any other comments, questions?
Madam President.
Yes, Kevin.
Moving to question five, and do I understand correctly that the data, that question five is more of a quantitative score compared to questions one through four, since it's based on practices seen in the district versus parent surveys, correct?
It's a mix of qualitative, quantitative, is what we did, is we looked at each of those items in those best practice indicators. Some are answered by an averaging of family, staff, and leadership survey results for that, like whatever items are matched back to that best practice indicators, and others are sort of like a checkbox in terms of looking at the maps or, you know, looking at, does your negotiated contract with your teachers' union represent, da-da-da-da-da-da, aligns to representation and committee, stuff like that. So some was a little qualitative, like yes or no, does it exist? Others were quantitative in terms of, you know, an average across staff and family surveys suggested 80% or 75% of this was in place. We counted for the ones that were quantitative, that had like those survey responses, 80% and above as highly implemented, and then anything from about 60% to 80% was that partially, and then nothing really fell below 60-ish percent, I don't remember the exact number, but nothing fell below 50 for sure, except those two items that we talked about that were not yet, that one will be in place immediately just by nature of this, and the other one is a part of the recommendations for collaboration.
One of the other things to note on that is that at a kind of a state level, the inclusive data, if you will, would really be tied more specifically to EE codes. This is like layered on top of it when you really look at practices, when you really look at the other kinds of things that are really variables. So having done this work a long time, years ago, we were much more focused on a place, and this is much more on kind of the qualitative, the quality of the work, not where a student receives education, and there's quite a bit between all of that. So using a combination of checklist and surveys gets more to the heart of what some of the trends and evidence and research really shows in terms of practice.
So would it be fair to say that the gap that we see in the percentages of satisfaction based on surveys, and then the 69% of success on question five, is that a gap that you expect to see or customarily see in other districts?
Yes, because that 69% isn't 69% satisfaction. It's when you look at, and I don't know how many best practice indicators there were, but we counted those, and we looked at 69% of those are at 80% or above. And the ones that are not at 80%, often in terms of the ones that we had survey response for, were in the high 70s. So the 80% was a somewhat arbitrary cutoff, but that was your average in terms of your family response, and so we set that as, we'll say anything above that is high, because it's at or above the average. And so your 69% is just representative of all those indicators, 70% of those are already in place, only 30% of those need to move from partially to fully, and only really 4% were those ones that need to move all the way from not-yet. Yeah.
I'll just add in, so the board's aware, the comprehensive information, the presentation and the attachments that NSSO has given you, I'll just highlight for you that they're giving you the executive summary. They have given us a very large, extremely comprehensive, detailed report that a staff level will be able to use, looking at every piece of data that came in for every question and every data source, and will be able to use that as we plan to look forward and make some comparisons on in the future.
It looks like Diane has all her bedside reading kind of laid out for her, thanks to the NSSO team. If you could remind me, so when last was, you know, you applauded District 25 for doing this audit often, when was the last time we did this audit?
I would say, that's a great question. I think it probably was maybe eight years ago.
Yeah, 2013, 14.
No, it was pretty close. It was with Dr. Jerome, and there was a strategic plan associated with the Special Education Services. Yep.
Okay, so eight years. So that's great that we're doing it and that it's so comprehensive, it's going to be so instructive, because it's qualitative and quantitative, so really helping us, you know, there's pieces that we have in our strategic plan and pieces that we can continue to incorporate. So I'm so glad that we have so much information to work with. In question one, I was, when Greg, my colleague, was talking, I was like, I should jump in and add on to question one, so now it's coming to me. But you had, you know, the, I really appreciate, and it's so instructive for us and our instructional team, the strengths, right? The strengths are amazing. We have so many strengths, and we should be so proud of everything that we're doing. And the high response rate that you got, that's a lot of data to work with, 280 responses, you know, as a researcher, I can say that's amazing. But the opportunities, is where the opportunity lies, right? There's many opportunities that you've outlined, and I can just be wowed by each of the opportunities, but I know that the team, we have experts on our staff that's going to really soak this up and let it marinate to implement the data into action, right? The one that I really appreciated was the recommendation in question one that talked about the annual survey for family satisfaction, you know? So I think that would be really instructive to have that annual kind of evaluation and hearing back from our families, so that if there are things that are unsaid, or I know as board members and community members, we're out there in the community as well, and, you know, we'll hear things, so it's better that it's said constructively in kind of evidence base, so that we can then take that instead of like just grocery store Marianna's conversations, right? So I think having that annual survey is excellent. I also want to say that the, what Kevin brought up, question five, the inclusive practices one, you know, I need to kind of absorb that a little bit more. It seemed like in that area, and correct me if I'm wrong, the question was, to what extent is Arlington Heights District 25 utilizing inclusive practices across all schools? It seemed like in that area, there were many, many strengths, but there were many opportunities and a lot of recommendations. So would you say that that is, you know, there's all, you know, we have data for all these, which is great, right? Data is a good place to work with, but that question five came with a little bit more punch to it?
Yeah, question five really becomes like the summary question.
Okay.
So every piece of questions one, two, three, and four is also folded into five in terms of each of questions one through four was also indicated in those best practice indicators that we use to guide question five. And so it could have been that that was the only question asked in the audit. You wouldn't have had the specific answers to, you know, family satisfaction separate from overall implementation of these indicators, or overall, you know, like the hard quantitative and educational environment codes around LRE and disproportionality of student identification, but all of that folds into question five, and every single piece from those first four questions was also used in question five. So question five is kind of like your big summary.
Okay.
And then also could continue to be your ongoing measure of progress, using, you know, like we were at, and in the full report, which exact indicators were at that high level, which are at that partial level, and which are at that not-yet level. So then next year, to reassess based on family survey or other information, where are you guys now in terms of moving some of those partials to full, maintaining those full high-level implementations, and moving some of those not-yets to partials? So that can be your progress monitoring tool as well, moving forward.
Great, okay, good, so it's kind of a summary, thank you. And my last two points is, when would you recommend that District 25 do another audit? You know, you know, it's been eight years, we did this, it's really instructive. What is the recommendation of duration between audits?
I think that's a great question, as well as, it also depends on how you use this information and develop your multi-year plan. Also being a part of a number of reviews... this information and develop your multi-year plan. Also being a part of a number of reviews over the years, giving it enough opportunity and time to really make sure, like, there's a, a number of steps, and I, I believe Diane's going to speak to that, some of those things to really give it a few years to really see that. I think your survey data and your progress monitoring, the, the indicators that you already have as a part or could have as a part of your annual process, you know, how is the parent survey to your point? How does that look every year? How does the next steps in your plan? And then really maybe a few years out from that, kind of just checking, that's probably going to be aligned to your strategic plan sunset, if you will, and next kind of go around. And so maybe folding those two together and looking at where you're at with the, the steps coordinated with that.
Okay, thank you. I have one final thing to say, but I'm going to open it up to anybody else and maybe if Diane wants to say anything. Any other comments, questions? Oh, Diane, were you going to share something?
I was just going to say, just overall, that it has been just an amazing collaboration with NSSO. Dr. Hackett and Kristi Kepri have been just amazing. I've learned so much going through this, being able to analyze all that data. As Dr. Vine shared, there's a lot to look through and I, I enjoy it. I really do. And I look forward to working with the team and the committee and, you know, thank them for their work on developing that multi-year plan because I get so excited and want to jump in on every single thing. And I have to, like you should. We really have to have a nice systematic approach to make sure that we can meet all these goals and bring everybody on board to increase our inclusive practices. So I'm excited about it.
Thanks, Diane. We'll make sure that we hold you accountable in, in pacing yourself and not like jumping and make sure that you sleep and rest. But we know how, how seriously you take this and how dedicated you are. So we're so grateful. But to Kristi, thank you so much. And to Dr. Judy Hackett, thank you so much. And I also want to say, you know, we're so excited that before you retire and your career sunsets at NSSO, we're so glad that we get you to, you know, you come here as our guest today presenting and doing this audit for us before you kind of sail away into the sunset. But I was asking, when do we do this? So maybe we could be like, could you call Judy Hackett back to come back? Because I know people, people like you and Lori may not retire well, you know, that may happen.
I will dust off my blazers.
So we, we honor your service to our students and we're, we're so grateful for everything that you've done and we wish you well. And, but we do hope that we see you back.
You know, you can count on that. And it has really been a joy to, to work certainly with this district and, and a number of others. But this was a wonderful culminating project for all of us. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is NSSO related. So Stacy, if you could please provide the information on the NSSO budget. Did I miss something? Sorry, I missed something.
Yeah, the resolution.
Oh, yes, I did. Business and finance, sorry. Right? Yes, I am jumping on. I'm on the NSSO theme. We have an action item. Can I have a motion, please, regarding business and finance? To see that. Brian, would you like to call a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to recommend a resolution authorizing the transfer loan of monies from a working cash fund to the debt service fund in the amount of $950,000.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second? Thank you. Kevin, maybe? Stacy, if you could please provide the information on that resolution?
Yes, this, this resolution allows us to loan money from our working cash fund to our debt service fund to make the payment for the interest due June 1st on the 2022 bonds, which are the 60 million in referendum bonds we sold back, I believe in September. The levy, the tax levy associated with those bonds is first going to appear on the 2022 tax bills, which are payable in calendar year 2023. The spring tax bill, however, is based on 55% of the prior year levy, which didn't include the bonds. So at this point, we don't have the dollars to make that interest payment. If you recall, we did this back in December to make the first payment that was due in December on the bonds as well. And we have to immediate the, then when we collect the taxes, repay the working cash fund. So this resolution is simply allowing me to transfer the 950,000. That would give me enough money to make those June 1st interest payments. We may have, or, or we'll reimburse ourselves with the tax dollars as they come in, in the fall.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Okay, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Neerman?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on to information about the NSSO budget 2023-24. Stacy, thank you.
So this is an annual item that we bring to the board. As you're aware, we're part of the NSSO co-op and between Diane's team meeting with the admin team of all the co-op member districts, as well as the NSSO app, starting as early as December with projections on student enrollment. And then we meet a number of times in the early calendar year between typically January and March or early April with the NSSO team to go over recommendations that they make for their budget and provide member input on that, to the extent they're able to then take that input and develop their proposed budget for the upcoming year, including the tuition, tuition costs for the upcoming year at this point will rise depending on the program, anywhere from 2.8% to 4.82%. As you can imagine, NSSO is dealing with a lot of the same financial issues that we are, like busing, transportation costs, staffing needs to adjust salaries to fill positions. The overall budget actually is only about $62,000 more than we budgeted in the prior year. We projected 35 students at NSSO and we always include in our budget an additional four students. I call them contingencies because we need to make sure that as we get into next school year, if we have students that move into the district or students that are already here, that during the year need to be placed in an NSSO setting, that we have the budget capacity to be able to make that change. We don't use those dollars unless we have students that need to be placed in a situation where we would use those tuition dollars. Additionally, we already on our side, I don't even know if NSSO knows this yet, but we already have an additional student. So we're aware of 36 students that we will be placing at NSSO. Again, we start this process back in December and things change, if not daily, at least weekly and monthly. But overall, I am projecting that our tuition budget in total, also including our private placements, which we will actually see a decrease by one student, in overall, the total change in our tuition budget will be about 60, $62,526. A key item to note is if the board will recall, as part of our personnel plan, the board did approve to try to hire, fill a position for a BCBA as well as an APE, and, please help me, Lori, APE, alternate physical ed?
Adaptive.
Adaptive physical education teacher and a board certified behavioral analyst. We contract for those employees through NSSO. But as everybody faced the shortages, especially filling the BCBA positions, we were able to fill one on our own this year and are posting to fill another one for next year. And if we're able to do that, this budget would, through NSSO, would go down by about $91,000. But overall, it's basically about a $62,000 increase over the prior year. I don't have our idea funds at this point, which I usually include as part of this presentation. I don't anticipate a decrease in those funds, but at this point, I don't know if there will be an increase, if any, that typically between the increase in idea funds and the tuition budget, we seem to fall fairly neutral in cost, although I would suggest that a $62,000 increase or a 1.8% increase is, is pretty neutral in the, in the current economic climate. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we would bring this back at the next meeting for board's vote on the resolution. And as always, there is a detailed document from NSSO that's included in the board packet.
Okay, thank you so much, Stacy. Any questions for my colleagues? Okay, no questions. Thank you, Stacy, for that information. And then we will now move on to personnel and planning. This is an action item. Can I have a motion, please? Yes, Brian.
I move that the Board of Education approve the calendar update for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Thank you, Brian. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Gina. Brian, if you, Dr. K, please provide the update on the calendar for the next school year.
Good evening. And I'll start by saying I'm sorry. I am coming back here again to talk about the calendar for next school year. But the reason I am here is because on Tuesday, April 4th of this school year, we had an election day where students and staff were in session. And the feedback we received quickly that morning and throughout the day was a concern about the safety of everyone that was at the school, as some of our schools served as polling places. So the calendar committee came back together to look at the recommended calendar for next school year with the election days in next school year's calendar kind of highlighted. There's only one election day in next school year, and that is on Tuesday, March 19th. The recommendation of the calendar committee was to look at a way to make Tuesday, March 19th, an election day, a day of non-attendance for both students and staff in the, in the air of safety. So the recommendation in front of you today has four changes from the current approved calendar for next school year. The changes are Tuesday, March 19th would be a non-attendance day. That's the election day. Monday, April 1st would be a school improvement day. The current school improvement day is Monday, April 8th. So April 8th would be a student attendance day. And Friday, April 5th would be a regular student attendance day. That is the give back for the election day. So there are four changes that the committee is recommending. And again, Tuesday, March 19th, non-attendance day. Monday, April 1st would be a SIP day. So students not in attendance, but teachers, yes. And then April 5th and April 8th would be regular student attendance days. So the committee believes this is in the best interest of students, staff, and the community. I want to thank the calendar committee for coming together one more time and their willingness to explore new ideas in the interest of student and staff safety. So at this time, that is the recommendation I would anticipate or hope you would approve. Are there any questions about the recommended changes?
Thank you, Dr. K.
One question. What, the change, what was the, was it April 5th was the?
Election day was April 4th, this year.
Correct. You said next year's election day trade-off was April 5th. What was that on the prior calendar?
April 5th on the prior calendar?
Yeah.
So on the currently approved calendar?
Or the currently approved calendar.
It is a non-attendance day.
It is. That's just want to clarify. Okay, so that's our, all right.
So now it would be a student attendance day.
Good question, Brian. Any other questions, comments? Dr. K, you should never feel sorry to come to the board. We, we always welcome open conversation. And it was a valid concern that was brought up. So it's really important that you came back to us. So if there's no further questions that I'm seeing, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Serniglia? Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Neerman?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. K.
And just a comment on how we recognize the calendar is already out there in the community. So we will do a thorough job of communicating, starting tomorrow, that a new calendar has been updated. And then I anticipate in March and in April, we will need to continue pushing the changes to make sure everyone knows which calendar dates have been updated. So we recognize it's going to cause some confusion in the future, but we will make sure we communicate that thoroughly.
Thanks, Dr. K. I know families are planning vacations and some folks are way more organized than I am, play, plan vacations in advance. So thanks for that communication. And I saw Adam at the back really nodding his head. We have a great communication team and, and we'll be out there getting that information out. So thanks for, you know, this, this is a way that we communicate to, out to the community, but we will have lots more going on there down the slide. So thank you. Okay, moving forward, we have another action item about the 2023-2024 employee compensation. Can I have a motion, please? Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 employee compensation for current teacher assistants, building support technicians, registered nurses, educational support personnel, individuals classified as other, food service, and administrators as submitted.
Okay, thank you. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. I heard. But Dr. K, if you could please provide the information on the employee compensation for next year?
Yes, thank you. And before I begin this one, I just wanted to recognize that it is a special week in education with Staff Appreciation Week. And it's recognized as Teacher Appreciation Week, but in this district, our PTAs have done an awesome job of being inclusive of all staff. And the reason I wanted to mention that is because this includes most of the all-staff outside of our teachers and our maintenance staff. So the next item I'm presenting is to recommend an increase to the employee compensation for the following groups: the teaching assistants, the building support technicians, the registered nurses, the ESP or Educational Support Personnel, the individuals classified as other or OSP, food service, and administrators. The salary increases that I am presenting to the board for these employees are based on a 5% Consumer Price Index, unless otherwise noted. All of the projected costs reflect known staffing changes and retirements. For the ESP group of employees and four specific employees that are part of the other group, I am recommending a $4,000 increase in their starting salaries based on market comparatives, and the same for the current employees in that group. These increases are intended to support District 25 in retaining, developing, and attracting high-quality employees. We seek to remain competitive with our surrounding school districts and attract and retain high-quality staff. The recommended salary increase for these employees as a whole compared to this year is an increase in 4.27%, staying below the CPI of 5% because of known staffing changes and retirements. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2000, sorry, 2023-24 employee compensation for the current teaching assistants, building support technicians, registered nurses, ESP, individuals classified as other, food service, and administrators as submitted. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thanks again, Dr. K. I love how you prefaced it with Teacher Appreciation Week, which is great. And so going along with what, what the students said in the video too, we appreciate inclusively all our staff members. Any questions for Dr. K? Seeing no questions. Lana, could you please call for a vote?
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Neerman?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. K. We, okay, we have another action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution dismissal of education support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force and direct the superintendent to provide the required notification to the employee, Tori Nagy.
Okay, thank you. Please, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Dr. K, is there any information you, you'd like to share? Dr. K, is there any information you'd like to share?
There is no additional information I would like to share at this time, other than the recommendation to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we take a vote? Okay, Dr. Lana, I just gave you a title. Lana, if you could please call for a vote.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Nierman?
Yes.
Member Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sorry, thanks, Dr. K. I think you're on the hook now, okay. Now we'll move on to the superintendent report. Dr. Bynum?
Thank you. We have no Freedom of Information Act to report at this time, so we'll move on to Letter B, the second reading of policies for Press 111.
Okay, could I please have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any discussions on these policies? Okay, seeing none. Lana, can you please call the vote?
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll now continue to second reading of policies, Press 110, which is an action item. A continuation from Press 110 policies are presented to the board for a second reading. This is an action item, so could I please have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Liz. Are there any questions or discussion on these policies? Seeing none, since we already had discussions on these, and this is a second reading, it's typical that we don't have that much discussion at second reading, so Lana, could you please call for a vote?
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to a continuation of policies from Section 6 review as presented to the board for a second reading. This is an action item. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Liz. Are there any questions for this second reading of policies? Seeing none. Lana, could you please call for a vote?
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Dr. Bynum, is that, so that's the end of our policy work for this year, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, kudos. You know, the board should definitely pat themselves on the back. We've done, I am really proud of my colleagues, all the hard work that they've put into policies this year. We have spent hours and hours looking through all our policies, making sure they meet the needs of our district, making sure that our policies meet the needs of our strategic plan, and so truly, kudos to you, my board members, for all your hard work with policies. We will now move on to the conversation about school resource officer position. Dr. Bynum, will you please provide a report to the board on the school resource officer position?
Thank you. This year, the Arlington Heights Police Department approached District 25, asking us to consider expanding our school resource officer positions that already serve District 25. The police department is looking through a lens of how can we best grow our service to the Arlington Heights community? And they believe that adding two full-time equivalent school resource officers who are already two full-time positions in the district, but these two that would specifically serve Thomas and South would be one of the answers on how to best expand their service to the entire community. This does align with our strategic plan in our mission of empowering an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens, specifically under the family and community goal that's a part of that strategic plan. And under that family and community goal, the board remembers that one of the strategies to implement is to develop effective partnerships with community agencies like our police department, higher education, and School District 214. So today, I'm going to talk through a little bit about what's our current partnership with the Arlington Heights Police Department, what our current school resource officers do and how they serve our school district and our community, a little bit of how we would propose expanding on their responsibilities and their service to our teaching of students and staff, to our supporting students, staff, and our community, the part that they play in security in District 25, and some of the other general things that they do in supporting our district. And to share with you a proposal for an enhanced partnership to begin in the new school year. So again, in our current partnership with the village, District 25 currently receives services from two full-time school resource officer positions. For many years, there was one SRO, but that expanded to two, I think about four, three or four years ago, where the village and the police department decided to provide two school resource officers. Currently, the village of Arlington Heights pays 100% of those school resource officer compensation, their salary and their benefits, and they provide it as a service of supports to District 25. Those two full-time school resource officers actually serve all schools, elementary schools in Arlington Heights, so not just District 25. They actually serve 19 schools, between the nine here and the parochial and the private schools, as well as other districts that have schools that sit within the Arlington Heights boundaries. They also support four additional schools that sit in Arlington Heights that have full-time school resource officers at those schools, but they support them by, with some of the investigations or other community connections that they do. Those two resource officers who serve those 19 facilities do spend significant time at South and Thomas, simply due to our large school enrollment, right? We have about 900 students at each of those schools. At this point, I want to stress to the board and to our community that we're talking about expanding school resource officers to expand the service to the school district and the community. We're not talking about school resource officers because we're seeing any kind of increase in criminal activity in our schools, any increase in student behaviors in our schools. It truly is about expanding an already successful partnership that services our schools and the community. Our current school resource officers, when they're available, because again, they do serve 19 schools in addition to the four that they support, currently, they do respond to requests from our district and school administrators. They help with individual student needs when there's a school-to-community connection, when those are related to safety, crime, or most often, student welfare. They do initiate investigations when necessary, and we ask them, or there is a criminal or safety or welfare piece, and when they do those investigations, they go off-site to do those during school hours and also during non-school hours. They also reach out to us proactively when there are community issues that are occurring that they feel may impact our schools. Those school resource officers provide safety topic lessons for all grades. Most likely, those are happening at the middle school and cybersecurity and some general safety lessons at the elementary. Again, they're not always able to hit all of our classes so that they can service all of the schools in our village. And they do provide school safety training to all of our school staffs. They visit every school with me, and we talk about school safety, we talk about community safety for staff. They provide updated information also as needed. And then a variety of general tasks that I would be too numerous to list, but for example, traffic support. They often attend our extracurriculars or special activities. We know one of our school resource officers this year volunteered his time to assist with one of our wrestling teams. We know we recently saw our police department over at Patton Schools Bike to School or Walk to School event, same thing at Westgate. So anytime that we have big events like that, they come as a, again, a part of the community to be supportive, to connect with our students, staff, and our families. And they also are members of our threat assessment team at the district level and facilitate and help us with our crisis plan implementation. A district crisis plan is what we do in a variety of possible scenarios. There's a crisis team at the village level, at the school level, and they help us connect those two teams. If we were able to expand on the service that they provide us, I've just listed a few things that we would greatly benefit from. In terms of educational responsibilities, they could support, plan, and implement many more age-appropriate student lessons in topics including, but not limited to, gang violence, drug and alcohol resistance education, online safety, community safety, conflict resolution, and the new required law on safe gun storage. They could provide ongoing training for staff on their role, on school safety, on community safety, and we would like them to arrange and participate in more parent-community education sessions, providing more community safety lesson opportunities for our parents. They would, they do at some level, but would increase their participation in regional, statewide, and national school safety conferences, and share those best-practice informations with our administration. And in addition to those educational responsibilities, in terms of supporting our students, staff, and our community, it would be great, and this is one of the police department's goals, is that a school resource officer could be present at school 100% of the time that students are present. Again, as I mentioned, right now, when they need to do investigations or go help the 19 schools that they support, they may or may not be in District 25. And what the police department feels would be really beneficial is our students continue to make connections with officers that are positive and help connect them in their community world as well, is to have those officers at our middle schools 100% of the time that students are present. Should an investigation need to be done, then, they would use other officers, and I'll show you that in a minute, to do the investigations and report back to those onsite school resource officers. The overarching goal, of course, is to promote positive relationships and enhance the communication between the police, students, staff, and parents, to give our students another adult role model that they can connect to. To be available to students, staff, parents, and the school community as a resource, again, be that positive role model for our students, collaborate with our Student Services Department to identify any at-risk students, and develop interventions to prevent delinquent behavior, to support our schools with DCFS and police-related incidents, and attend and educate at community functions hosted by our schools. And some items in the area of security would be helping us maintain a high level of visibility during school entrance and dismissal times, as well as during passing periods, assist with supervision of co-curricular school activities, both at home and away, as requested, to meet with administrators to advise them of potentially violent situations and to plan for the safe resolutions of those situations, to always follow building and District 25 policies and refer all matters of school discipline to the proper administrator. I want to highlight that for a moment. Again, our lens here is expanding on community service and expanding on connections with kids. School resource officers are not put in place to assist with discipline. They're not at all in that room when administrators or teachers need to work with students and families on discipline. Our school resource officers are only called in when there's a community connection to help support student welfare, student safety, community safety. So again, I want to be clear, school resource officers are not student, are not deans, are not administrators. We do not need them for student discipline in District 25. They're a resource and a connection to support our students and our families back in the community, and when there's a community-school connection. We already have that relationship with them. It's very successful. We're talking about expanding on that relationship. Again, they would participate in our crisis team and our threat assessment team. We also would ask them to be another adult who helps check our school facility hardware, our communication systems, our procedures for proper functioning, should we need those procedures to be put in place, provide protection to students, staff, and the school from theft, vandalism, assault, other violations of the law, assist staff in the event of emergency, and supervise our parking lots and automobile traffic near the school, and preventing loitering and trespassing on school property when we request them to support that for us. And finally, just some examples, again, of how they could expand on their responsibilities in general. We would expect that they maintain all law enforcement training. We would require that they participate in school resource officer training, including implicit bias and racial and ethnic sensitivity training approved by the district. We would expect that they assume responsibility for finding a substitute when they're absent, right? So in our current relationship, if a school resource officer is absent, they simply were not able to have them on that day. Should we enter into an agreement with the village to have two full-time resource officers serving our middle school, if an officer was unable to be there, it would be required that they have a substitute officer from the police department be present. Acknowledge that the role is responsible for criminal law issues, not school discipline issues. Perform duties in uniform or street clothes with police identification. It's important to the police department as well that when their police officers are in a more casual uniform, that it still somehow identifies them as working for the police department. Should we ever have a critical incident and a response team come in, they need to know that that person that does have a weapon or handcuffs on them is a police officer in that critical incident. They would be required to carry their current service weapon and all police department-required items. That's a requirement of any time a police officer is on duty anywhere that they are located. They've done that for the past 10 years. They've always had their service weapon and their required items when they've been in our schools. We've had school resource officers in District 25 for at least 15 years on that partial-time basis. And again, serve as a liaison between the school and police department, and assist us with safety and emergency drills. Again, just some of the items that we would be building into a job description specific for District 25 should we move forward. So let me kind of show you the difference to what our current arrangement is, our current successful partnership, and what's being proposed. On the left-hand side, part of the proposal is there would still be two full-time school resource officer positions, that the village of Arlington Heights would pay 100% of their compensation and benefits, so we're not deleting the two current roles. Those will still exist, but they would serve 17 of the Arlington Heights schools, because we would pull Thomas and South off of their workload. And then they would support six more schools, including Thomas and South, that would have full-time school resource officers in Arlington Heights. And again, they would continue to serve all of our elementary schools in District 25. So should we add two full-time school resource officers, there's still the other two that currently exist, serving all the remaining schools, including our elementary schools. And if you look to the right-hand side, the proposal would then include two additional full-time school resource officer positions. District 25 would pay the school resource officer salary, expected to be about $111,000 each. each, so $222,000 would be what we believe that cost would be. The Village of Arlington Heights would pay 100% of the school resource officer benefits, so they would pay all their insurance and all of their benefit package. So both organizations of that partnership have some cost into that partnership. These two school resource officers would be assigned to our middle schools only and would be present anytime students are present. Again, this is the proposal moving forward, again, through the lens of the Arlington Heights Police Department trying to find a way to continue to expand their service to the community and their service in connecting with students and families to support them here at school and in the community. So that's our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vine. Questions from my colleagues?
Madam President?
Yes.
And Dr. Vine. I'm curious, who will be hiring these two new? Is that the district, the police department, a combination? Who will be responsible for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the police department would bring us three or four candidates for each of the two positions. Current police officers in Arlington Heights that have experience and that they believe through their interview process would be great candidates for a school resource officer position. Then we would get to interview those candidates for those two positions. The police department would have a member who would sit in on those interviews, but not necessarily ask any questions, but sit in so that they could hear the questions we're asking, the responses, so that they could provide us any guidance with further questions that we might have after an interview. And then we would, as a school district, get to select from the candidates that they brought us, which one we felt was appropriate for our positions and our specific job description, or we'd be able to say, we don't see a candidate in this pool that you've brought us and would like to start that process over.
Madam President?
Yes.
Dr. Vine. On Slide 11, I believe, there's a mention of participation in SRO training, including implicit bias and racial and ethnic sensitivity training approved by the district. Is there, has the district taken any steps to investigate or review any of those types of trainings at this point?
Yeah, there is a statewide and a nationwide school resource officer certification and conference. And we have been able to review the national level in that area. The state program, we, I am actually personally going to this June to sit in on the workshops related to everything diversity, equity, and inclusion and school resource officers. Our two current school resource officers are also attending that with me. And again, I'm going personally so I can best evaluate how the statewide program is.
And then another question on Slide 8. It lists educational responsibilities of SROs. Now, I, I'm aware that currently our SROs do come in occasionally to do presentations for students on the importance of, you know, safety involving things like drugs and alcohol, social media, bullying, those types of things. But considering the possibility that these officers would be interacting with middle school students day in, day out throughout the school year, thinking about my own experience in education, I have a middle school endorsement, and in order to earn that endorsement, of course, I had to take classwork in the content areas for which I'm endorsed. And no doubt that our Arlington Heights Police Officers are well-qualified to teach the content of any of those categories. But in addition to that, people who are going to be teaching middle school students are required to take coursework, of course, in pedagogy, but also the one thing that I think about is I was required to take a course in adolescent development and psychology. And I'm wondering what kind of training is available to potential SROs in that area?
Thank you. Being a middle school teacher myself, I can identify. Let me first add, I don't know what, what education they have in adolescent psychology. That's something I definitely could research. But let me also clarify that anytime anyone, guest teacher, guest from the community, school resource officer is teaching kids, a certified employee is present, right? So they're not teaching a class without the teacher there. They're more often coming in as a teacher requests that, hey, we're having kids ask lots of questions about, you know, the train tracks, or, you know, what's the requirement for, what's the rule on loitering in Arlington Heights? Could you come in and speak to my kids? Or at the middle school level, talking about cybersecurity and online safety, doing that during, with the health teacher during that class. So it would never be a school resource officer teaching a class on their own. It would always be in partnership with a classroom teacher.
Okay, thanks for those questions. No, no, go for it, Greg. Did you, do you have a question, Greg?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I have a number of things. I, I want to do some table setting before I made some comments and asked Dr. Vine some more questions. And first is, you know, just to be clear up front that I think we all, I think it could speak for most, all of us, that we have a lot of gratitude for the existing partnership we have with the village, the Arlington Heights Police Department, and our current SROs. So, and before we really decide if, I, for myself, and you'll see my questions around this is just, I'm looking for more clarity on the how. And, and I want to acknowledge that this, this question, it was interesting in the interim when this agenda became public and then talking to some community members, there were wildly different assumptions about what was already happening in our schools. And then when the question came up, it's a really weighty issue. And knowing that this presentation is coming from an expansion of the connection to the community and services, as you explained, Dr. Vine, but understandably, a lot of people just see safety, you know, as, as a concern too. Right, not a concern, but as, that's what they hear. So I, I just really hope we take the time needed to, to really get all of these answers and feel really comfortable whether we move forward or not and how we do it. So Kevin brought up some things on training, and I know, Dr. Vine, in there, you mentioned some topics, you know, included but not limited to. I just wanted to bring up some more and, and some more topics. And I know when we hear about this again, I, I would appreciate a really built-out list of, of training topics, at least that we would start with. And some of those that I've found, and this comes from the SUNY Buffalo, that State University of New York Buffalo Safety Conference, they mentioned mental health, adolescent development and communication, which I think was mentioned already, trauma-informed care, de-escalation techniques. And then along with the ones you mentioned for school-specific topics, they added positive school discipline, even though we acknowledge that they are not disciplining, right? But what that looks like, truancy, dropout prevention. And then you, you mentioned the National Association of School Resource Officers, and they, they have on their site adolescent mental health training. And so I, I'm not asking you to develop this list off of what I'm saying. I'm just sharing my sourcing for these. But really interested because that will, I think that will give some peace of mind. What, what are our SROs if we move forward? What will they have supporting them as they work with our children? So those, that's my comments on training. Now, Madam President, I have two other areas. I want to talk about memorandums of understanding and just the process we go through, but I can yield if there's other questions before I continue.
Can we just add one thing in related to what you're saying, Greg, is part of what we're hoping tonight is an understanding from the board of, are you interested in us possibly pursuing this? And if so, the next step is we come back to you with a, a job description. We've been working on one. We've collected many. We're personalizing it for District 25, that we would come back to you with that detailed job description, including things such as that you have training in the following or will agree to participate in training in the following. And either at that time or soon after, a contract from the village to enter in this agreement. And the board then would be asked to, again, review and approve the job description and approve a contract should we get to that point.
Thank you for explaining that, Dr. Vine. And so that's a great segue into the, the other area I want to talk about. In reading up on SROs and what that means for a district to go this direction, the language that I read about a lot, and I'm really interested to learn more, because you, you mentioned contract and job description, and the memorandum of understanding is what I keep seeing, and it's, this is found in the Department of Justice Community-Oriented Policing Services. It's also men, mentioned in that safety conference language. But when we read about, and again, I'm going to go back to my first statement about our gratitude for existing partnerships, but when we read about places where there are challenges with SROs, and I'm going to make a leap here that wasn't, but we often read about communities or situations where there wasn't a clearly defined memorandum of understanding. And so, and so that's, and that's why I want to spend a minute on this, just to share interests that came up in, in my reading on this, and maybe others have those. And again, sharing, again, the great trust that we have in you, but just sharing thoughts that came out from my learning. So like, for instance, there's a, an Education Week article from 2021. And so part of a memorandum of understanding would include a really solid description of partner roles and responsibilities, which you start, talked about today. And so that national organization, the NASRO, did a survey, and if, they found that two-thirds of the SROs responding said they most identified with law enforcement, and just over a quarter identified with being a mentor. And so understanding, right, where do you identify will greatly impact how you view your role. And, and they pointed to, in that, in that article, the, again, the memorandum of understanding. The MOU, as I've seen it described, laid out a statement of purpose, how information-sharing happens between the district and the authorities, supervision responsibility and chain of command. And then that safety conference was a little more descriptive, included many of the things you mentioned, Dr. Vine, like minimum training requirements, governance structure, transparency, and accountability, and then how the program as a whole and individual SROs will be evaluated. So I'll pause again. Maybe you have some comments around my, around what I'm suggesting.
No, I hear what you're saying. And we've talked to many districts, some, especially those that have, whether it's a part-timer or full-time school resource officer, some that have job descriptions, some don't. We feel strongly about a very detailed and, again, personalized for District 25 job description. We've collected many and are currently working on those. And so whether we add to that a memorandum of understanding or within that job description it spells out those exact same things, I think we have the same interest that you're sharing.
Thank you. And then the, the last piece, I just want to talk about process and I'm happy to share this resource without dictating a direction, but the Department of Education and Department of Justice put together a local implementation rubric for when you're looking to engage SROs in your schools. And it's really pretty clear, but one thing they, they talk about quite a bit is, well, they mentioned it in several different places, is looking at data. What, what data is bringing you to, not you, but us, to this decision? Or what are the expected outcomes that we are, and we've talked about those generally, but if we're going to evaluate the program, starting out with what are our goals, then, then we can come back and go, yes, it was successful. But their rubric, it just covers five areas. And they mentioned creating a sustainable partnership, which I think we have, we have great partnerships. They mentioned that step two is that MOU. And, but they mentioned meeting constitutional and statutory civil rights requirements, because we know, well, research will tell us that we're, SROs programs are not successful is where there's challenges with historically marginalized groups or students with disabilities. The third is recruit and hire effective SROs. That sounds like a great idea, but the method they highlight is hiring guidelines, and again, you've mentioned that. Keeping SROs well-trained, we've talked about that, but not just the training, but a refreshed program that's based on those hiring guidelines. And then finally, just that continued evaluation. So I just mentioned all of these because I think, I'll go back to my, one of my first comments is, is the how. And, and thank you for explaining what our next step would be. So if I could suggest, you know, in your presentation, Dr. Vine, you suggested to us, and the Arlington Heights Police Department is suggesting two full-time officers. I wonder, since they're bringing it to us, we didn't go to them to seek out this particular partnership. I wonder if we should consider a different type of staffing, just to make sure that what we are moving forward with is right-sized to our needs in the district. Such, that could mean we start with one SRO between the two middle schools. It could mean, you know, an SRO that is at South and the feeder schools. Knowing that there's, are, those are those other two SROs, but if we highly value that, maybe it makes sense to have that SRO connected to where the kids come from as they move to South or as they move to Thomas. So maybe that's where I'll pause. Again, I have one other comment, but maybe there's thoughts on that.
So, Dr. Vine, Madam President?
Yes, Brian.
I guess my, my thoughts are in alignment with Greg's. I look at the return on investment, right? So from a school and school board and administrative perspective, right? I keenly appreciate the involvement we're having and the information that's being shared about what this role is, the definition of the role, the responsibilities. Again, great point that we didn't, you know, there's no increased safety need or security need that's, that's driving this, I think, for me, in my decision-making, that's huge. Then the biggest one is, is that this isn't, this role isn't to have an armed security guard for incident response, right? That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about an extension of our faculty, essentially, that just happens to carry a gun. So those are the kind of things that I'll be looking for. That return on investment piece is that having a well-defined roles and responsibility. How is he going to enhance what the, what the two officers are charged to do across a lot of schools and a lot of geography today will be consolidated? That appeals to me. I mean, quite frankly, a lot of this appeals to me, except for the price tag, but, you know, that's a necessity of evil. But, you know, and even insofar as that, right? Do we need, going from two for the entire town to having two dedicated to two schools, it is a pretty broad leap. So what are some other options? You know, another thing that popped into my mind, and not to necessarily quantitatively get into this, but we're not in school 365 days a year, yet that's a 365-a-day-year salary. So I'd like to see some attention to that. You know, summers is, is a big gap, so just some of those things. And again, it's not to nickel-and-dime the price tag of paying for the full year and not necessarily having the resource officer in the school for the full year, but then again, it's kind of to keep that defined to the role, right? The salary and the, and the portion or the amount that we pay should be commensurate with our needs and our time with that resource officer. But in general, you know, really articulating for us what their job is and isn't, has been hugely helpful in this presentation and any, and any further, you know, convers, excuse me, conversations that we have. So. So thank you for the preparedness and the detail, so that we can kind of get our head around it.
Madam President?
Yes, Gina.
Dr. Bynne, can you add one more thing to your list? And it's actually more for you, Stacy. Can we get, when we bring this forward again, can we see the budget impact and the proposed funding and what, what it would do financially impacting our budget, please? Thank you.
I really appreciate my colleagues' comments. I know, Greg, you may have some more. I think for me, it comes down to the why, right? Always for us, why do we, do we, what is the need? Why are we doing this? And you've explained it really well, and I also appreciate, Dr. Bynne, that you've put in a lot of work in this. It's, and it's an initial conversation to see the direction of the board, and that there's so much more. I really appreciate that you're going to this conference yourself to kind of learn more about the world of SROs and in conjunction with education and so forth. So I still need, to make an informed decision on this, I still need to understand the why. I still need to understand kind of evidence-based solutions of the benefits of having an SRO or both sides of it, right? I think, you know, we've read a lot and heard a lot, and I know we're not doing this for school safety, like, you know, response rates like Brian was saying, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about evidence-based and research on weapons in school, and, and also, like, is there another way we could meet these needs and know that the Arlington Heights Police Department, looking at this, it came to us as an expansion of their services to the wider community? So for us, when we look at, okay, for District 25, our two middle schools, I know AHPD, you know, the police department was looking at 19 schools, we're, as a board, concerned about our two middle schools here. Is there another way, when we answer that why, or when we put that why forward a little bit more, is there another way we could meet it? Is it social workers? Is it something else? So I think that I'd love to hear more from your learning when you go to this conference, and I really appreciate all the information that you've already gathered. So I think I'm still at the needing to kind of absorb this more.
I definitely can take the questions that I've heard from the board, and we can come back to you with some more details, bring you even kind of our draft job description that's more personalized for District 25, as well as information from the upcoming conference and some further research to help you continue. We don't have to make this decision today, right? It is an interest in, if we want to have it start with the school year, that, you know, we, we have someone start kind of when staff start, and it becomes a part of that normalcy for our kids. But that doesn't have to be a, you know, definite timeline. And then the other thing I'll just share again is, we're not talking about anything new, right? We were school office, school resource officers in District 25 before I started here. We've had two exceptional school resource officers for the last four years who have initiated, can we go to conferences? Can we learn more? We want the highest certification for school resource officers that we can, and the school district has, just a reminder to the board, we have funded that training for them at their interest in having school resource officer national certification. So we've contributed more to that partnership because we felt it's great for our students and for our community. So we're not necessarily talking about a, we're not talking about a new position, we're not talking about a new role, we're talking about consistency in a role and expansion in a role, especially at our middle schools, age levels, where kids could always use more mentors, more connections, more positive role models. So, but with that, happy to bring some more information. It may not be the late May meeting, it might be, let us go to the conference in June and then come back to you at that time.
No, thanks, Dr. Bynne, and we appreciate that, and applaud the positive relationship we've had with community agencies throughout Arlington Heights, includes, including Arlington Heights Police Department, and that it's been, and that this is an enhancement. The last thing I'll say is that the same thing that, that Brian had brought up is the price tag, right? I feel like this year, we are, so yes, the, like Gina asked, the budgetary kind of consequences there, because this year, we are embarking on lots of improvements and capital improvements and so forth, so funding, so that $222,000 kind of price tag as well.
I will just, sorry, add one other thing related to that, just so the board is aware. We have not found any school district that has school resource officers that has been paying nothing. So we have to really just appreciate, right, the Village of Arlington Heights' commitment to create these positions, to fully fund these positions, these positions that spend all of their time serving schools, and that has, again, it's all one pot of taxpayer money, right? Whether it comes out of the Village or the school district, but it has been something they've been committed to for over a decade. And again, there is no school district, we have found, that doesn't pay at least 50% of that cost.
So to that point, Dr. Bynne, real quickly, is there any, because I know that you had referenced research with surrounding districts, is there anything you want to highlight about that, other than, that's great, we have, we love our police department for giving us that, kind of almost that gift of the SROs? Is there anything else?
You know, I can bring that next. It's really varied, right? There are school districts, School District 15 has had a full-time school resource officer in each of their four middle schools for 30 years, over 30 years, paid for completely 100% salary and benefits by the school district. Other districts in the area that, there are many that don't have school resource officers or maybe have what they call a school police liaison, so someone that they connect with through the police department. And then the others that have school resource officers, again, at least fund part of it. And, but the other piece through our research is that the schools in the collar counties around us that have full-time school resource officers say that they spend, their school resource officer spends the majority of their time on student, community, criminal activity and welfare. And again, that is something that in District 25, we're very fortunate, we don't see significant, we see very minimal student-related criminal activity in our communities and even less in our schools. So that's a different need, right, than what we would be looking at. So, for example, when organizations say, look at the data, right? What's your, what's your criminal activity, or your student expulsion, or your student suspension, or disciplinary situations, and how does a school resource officer help that? Because, partially because we've had this great relationship for years, we don't have significant data, if any, in those areas. So again, that's another piece I'll bring you, I'll bring you the surveys that we did with surrounding districts. Again, that's why our situation, we believe, is very different, and ours is about expanding and helping not only our students and our staff, but our community as well, in expanding that position, as opposed to coming to because we see a need of safety or, you know, criminal activity or welfare concerns.
So it seems like there's been this proactive relationship, because of the proactiveness of the police department and that relationship with our schools, that that data has shown positively, so that, that's interesting.
And of course, the, right, the amazing school district community that we live in, and our partnership with parents, we have amazing students, everybody has amazing students, right? But we just, it's, this is a great place to be a kid, to be a family, to be a superintendent, that we're not needing to focus our attention in those areas.
The last thing, I promise, Greg, is that as a school board, we went to District 21 for, hosted the Illinois Association School Board Meeting, and at that meeting, which all the North Cook School Board members attended, District 21 admin staff, board members, superintendent, all highlighted the positive relationship and impact their SROs have had at their district. But that's just one data point, right? It's just one district, so I wanted to bring that up. Greg, thank you for waiting patiently.
No, thank you, Madam President, and I just wanted to mention two more things. One, Dr. Bynne, in looking through all of the stuff, and you hadn't mentioned this yet, so I'll bring it up. The Department of Justice, that Community Oriented Policing Services has grants, and I, it looked, it read to me like the Arlington Heights Police Department would apply for those, but I just bring that up because we mentioned financial concerns. Have no idea if that's, would fit, fit for us. Okay, all right. And then this fits in with some of the other comments, but that, when we consider this again, I think it really relates to what you were talking about, Dr. Jogi, is that I would appreciate a kind of a 360 view, and I know we're not talking about safety, I'm going to use the word safety, but in the biggest umbrella sense. I mean, we talk about intellectual safety, emotional safety, physical safety, but what are we, what are we doing in all those areas? How do we currently address substance abuse, emergency readiness, bullying, cyberbullying, physical safety, emotional safety? So what are all the pieces? Our, our social workers, our psychologists, our SCL program? And so how did that, and it'd be really great to see the financial impact of those, I don't know if that's realistic to ask for, but just so that, here's our, our current, you know, world we live in, and then here's this new piece of the puzzle we want to add in, so that we're not taking a siloed view on this particular presentation. But thank you, Dr. Bynne, for, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bynne, for that initial kind of bringing this to us, because it was put forward to you, you've already done a lot of research, thanks for kind of taking those questions. I think what I heard from the board is that they want to continue kind of exploring, learning, getting informed, so, so thanks for bringing that forward to us and following up with us on that. We will now move on, you know, I feel like, just like Thomas Middle School was so busy with all those activities that they shared, I feel like the board being May, we have a really packed agenda, and on top of that, we want to fulfill the, the next part of our agenda, which is the superintendent search piece, and so I'd like to, for us to jump into that right now. It is 10:10 right now, so I'm very cognizant of the time as, as, as the person who facilitates these meetings. So, you know, so the board will continue this discussion on the superintendent search, and this is one of the board of education's main responsibilities, is the employment of the superintendent, and we began embarking on this action on May 9th at the last board meeting, no, not May 9th, whenever the last board meeting was when we came. Exactly, something. Now, you have all had a chance to review the superintendent search firms. We, as a board, agreed that this is so important to us, we have really big shoes to fill with Dr. Bynne's retirement, and we want to give this decision or take it very seriously. And so we decided that we do want to go the search firm route, and you've all had an opportunity to look at the different search firms, we have proposals that were given to look at it in detail. So at this point, I'll say that we're just starting this conversation, so as I had noted in the beginning, we rarely do this, but this board meeting, we will not have a second public comment section opportunity, so that we can delve into the superintendent search. So if you do have a public comment for the second time, please hold on to those questions, feel free to email us, email Dr. Bynne, we'll bring them to the next board meeting, but at this point, we're going to jump into the superintendent search point, search conversation. So I'll start off by saying this. I think the way we should go about this is that if each board member could kind of weigh in into what you researched, the proposed, the search firms that you looked at, and which search firms you felt would serve our board well in looking for the next superintendent. So if we go around, if you feel comfortable, kind of share a name, and I will kind of jot down the name, and a name that comes up commonly, we'll have that discussion more to say, is that a way that will narrow it down? If anybody else has a better idea or a different idea, I'm open to that too. Gina?
Madam President?
Yes.
My apologies to my board colleagues, I do have a hard stop due to personal circumstances this evening.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Please, good night to you. So if, any, does that sound good, that we go about kind of going through what are the search firms and kind of going there? So which side of the room should we start, or anybody want to jump in?
Dr. Jogi, maybe you could model how you would like us to do it, maybe you could start, and then we could pick it up from there.
Okay.
Would that work?
Yep, that would work. I always like to give my colleagues kind of first dips on comments, because I love to hear what your comments are before I jump in, but I'm happy to do it this time. So I would like, in looking at the search firms that we have in front of us, I would, there are some search firms, knowing that we were going to go through this process, I have been following search firms for a while, this, you know, past couple of years, actually, ever since Dr. Bynne said she's leaving, we're like, okay, we need to jump on it, because this is a really huge responsibility. And I've been following consultants in the field who are experts in the areas, and so I would like to interview three different search firms. Ed Leadership, hold on, I'm going to pull them up. I was at a different one, yeah. I'd like to interview Educational Leadership Solutions. I would also, I, because of the consultants that have been listed and just what I know about their thoroughness in the process and just in following their work, the same goes with School Exec Connect. And the one that I have given a lot of thought to and followed a lot, but, and had a conversation on behalf of the board with them again today, is Alma Advisory Group. Now, Alma Advisory Group has a, you know, has a, when we look at the pricing, I'm always very cognizant of that fiscal responsibility piece. I'm just curious what they offer that is different from what others offer. None of these, I wouldn't, you know, so right now, I'm just kind of throwing three names out that I would like to hear more from, so not, not kind of pinpointing anyone, but I'm just really curious as to what the services are, especially with Alma, because their price tag is a little bit different. So that's the three that I would go for in the beginning, but I'm really open to ideas, and this is not a solid list for me. Ed Leadership Solutions, Educational Leadership Solutions. So I'll stop there and kind of hear from other colleagues. Greg, do you want to jump in?
Sure, Madam President, I'll take a turn at it. My top three, I'll say them and then highlight a couple elements that stood out to me. The top two, I think are, yeah, I don't know if I place either of them necessarily first, but I had at the top Ray &amp; Associates, followed by McPherson &amp; Jacobson, and then finally BWP. So Ray &amp; Associates would stand for me, they mentioned a pre-interview videos of their initial cohort, which I thought would be very helpful at a starting point. And you know, all we have is what they give us, you know, so I really appreciated the specificity of the timeline that they presented in the initial proposal. Across all three, well, all of them, I really looked at the language of how they talked about their, how they would gather input, and they used the term forums, McPherson used stakeholder input, BWP used focus groups, and I just think, you know, how, how these firms use language kind of conveys their, their, well, it could convey how they view it, and I found those to be, the way they described those, very open and, so Ray &amp; Associates and McPherson were really clear in their presentation about their commitment to DEI. Both mentioned a different thing, different things, but one that stood out was, they mentioned specifically diversity and how they would advertise the position in the places. And I'll acknowledge that I'm sure any of these places could advertise anywhere, but that they included these in their presentation, I found informative. Anything else? BWP mentioned individual board interviews, I found that interesting, and mentioned board interview prep, McPherson, just a couple other things. They, the way they described their reference checks and the depth that they go also seemed stand out. I did have a couple challenges even with all, or interesting things like McPherson, they mentioned, they provided a timeline, but the, I found it problematic. they mentioned that they provided a timeline, but the I found it problematic in that a lot of the stakeholder input, the way at least they mentioned it, would happen in the summer. I think that's a tough time to get to families and get great input, so I would prefer that happen during the school year. And so those are my three and some reasons I selected.
Thank you, Greg. I'm just going to jump in before other colleagues jump in, is that it is interesting the different vernacular that's used, the verbiage as far as stakeholder input versus focus groups, right? But my understanding from search firms is that pretty much, of course, they're drafted differently, but pretty much search firms kind of have a specific process, and stakeholder engagement is part of its focus groups. They may call it different things, and that as a board, we can say, you know, when we meet with these search firms, so say, say, you know, search firm A didn't mention focus groups and mention stakeholder input, we could still say, hey, as a board, we're really interested, and I am very super interested, speaking for myself, as far as what does our community need? So the stakeholder engagement piece is really important, you know, and and what does that look like? Does that look like surveys and focus groups? And what does that look like? So we can tailor those for any of these search firms. I just wanted to state that. Any other, you could go this, you're looking, I'm looking at you.
Sure, Madam President. So when I was reading through the proposals, much like everyone else, I recognized that it's a lot of the same stuff, and it's hard to determine what speaks to us. One of the things I thought about is, and we can discuss this, but the value of a more local firm versus a more national, will they have a better feel of what our community looks like? I don't know. That's one of the things I thought about. I thought about the level of support that's offered for the community, the staff as a board, and I also looked a little bit at the references from other districts. And I thought about firms that have placed administrators in our local districts, and that's something to consider as well. So the three that that popped to the top of my list were McPherson and Jacobson, just because I was I was impressed with the amount of detail they shared about the process and the purpose. I, a lot of their language spoke to me, once again, it's it's language in a very long proposal, so that's that. I also highlighted B W P. I believe that our board in the past worked with this firm and brought us our Dr. Bynum. So and I don't know how that went, I don't know our feedback on that process, but I think it's worth revisiting them again, since we had success with them before. And then also, School Exec Connect popped to the top of my list. I thought that their work and process was very clear, and again, they are a more local firm.
I'm already loving this process of the the thoughtfulness that my colleagues are putting into these choices. Kevin, you look ready. I feel like a school teacher now.
So so this may not surprise some of my fellow board members, but being a teacher, I made a rubric to help myself rate these different proposals because it was very overwhelming, and I just didn't know how to go about it because I didn't want to just go like, ah, yeah, that reads pretty good. So I had a lot of the categories that Liz just mentioned. I did make one of the categories location-based. I do think it's it's good to have people who are Illinois-based, or at least have placed people in a lot of Illinois districts because they have an understanding for, you know, our part of the country, for, you know, our learning standards, the type of student population that we have and things like that. I did look very closely at the references. As Liz mentioned, I looked at the guarantees because most of the proposals included a guarantee of up to two years with to the superintendent contract, if anything, like if the contract is, you know, if whether the superintendent or the board decides to end the contract early, they guarantee their service, and other than expenses, they come back in and they go through the process all over again. Some some of the firms have a two-year, some have a one-year, and some have no mention. I also looked at cost, and I did also look at mention of elements of our strategic plan, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the importance of that stakeholder input for community forums and feedback. So based on all of that, the three that had the top ratings for me were McPherson, Jacobson, Ray and Associates, and Alma with the caveat that I understand that the expense is quite different compared to the other firms. But like Dr. Jogi, I am I am curious to what level of detail and specificity they bring to the table, just because they did, in their proposal, mention direct elements of the district's strategic plan and our community, not just like in generic terms, but in very specific terms that they had done their homework, it seemed to me.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. For all of these that have been mentioned so far, I, you know, I had mentioned to my colleagues that I'm part of a board president's kind of working group or, you know, we don't have a specific title for it, but I've also kind of talked to districts and board presidents and board members about who they've used in the past, and so that was really informative as well. And, yeah, and I was hesitant to put Alma on the list, but I'll say that as Illinois Association School Boards had taken us to District 65 Evanston, and Alma had conducted their superintendent's search in Evanston, and and their proposal is very specific and breaks things up. And it and in speaking to them, my colleagues, some of you had mentioned the equity piece. Alma has a lot more, you know, we our strategic plan is equity-focused, and Alma has a big equity element to their search process. So I learned that today in the call with them, so I wanted to share that with you. Okay, Brian.
All right, well, without repeating much of the criteria that's been mentioned, you know, I I I look at proven track records. I talked to individuals in our community, including some other superintendents of who has been used to place others. I only have two, Ray and Associates and B W P. Actually, B W P would be my first, and Ray and Associates would be my second. Definitely the boards. What I liked about both of their presentations and what what really spoke to me was I want to I want to be able to kind of develop the plan with somebody and not purchasing your process to find me a superintendent. I want this to be a partnership, and I want to have, you know, a rubric of of our, you know, what we want in our superintendent has to be drafted from us and whoever we hire. And I really got that sense from those two, in addition to, as I mentioned, you know, speaking to other individuals that have gone through the process locally. Locally was kind of important to me as well. I mean, people that are looking for that sort of job are going to find districts as great as ours. I'm not too worried about that scope, having that national scope, but having our involvement and input to be able to derive a plan together and really outline what we want in a superintendent because we have such a great one to to replace. So that's our model right there. So thanks.
Thanks so much, Brian. So what I've heard so so far, what's important to us is I've heard local firm, and the ones that have been mentioned are mostly local, local.
Say, yeah, if I could just jump in, so I've just, I don't know if this helps you or not, but I've tabulated, right, who each of you chose, and there are three firms on that list that have three are on three of your lists. B W P, McPherson, and Jacobson, and Ray and Associates. And then there are two firms that are on two lists.
Yes.
Alma and School Exec, and one firm, Educational Leadership Solutions, that I all think is only on one list.
Yes.
And nobody has the I A S B organization. So I don't know if that's something helpful for you to look at, well, there are three that rise to having three on three lists or not.
Yep.
But in terms of who's local.
Yes.
The organizations that primarily place in Illinois are B W P, Educational Leadership Solutions, and School Exec Connect from that group.
Thanks for that information, and that's what I was, the reason why I put Ed Leadership School, Ed Leadership Solutions, is they are, the consultants I saw are Illinois-based, experienced educational leaders and superintendents, so that's why I put that on the list. So I heard local firm, I heard the level of support that they that the firm should provide us, I heard, you know, some folks looked at references, I heard that we want ownership in the process, right, not like them, right, we really want to have that ownership in the process. I heard folks that had an emphasis on equity as well. So right now, we could eliminate, you know, I had brought up Ed Leadership Solutions, I think we could eliminate it. I was the only person who brought that that firm up. So I guess I'd ask, you know, the question came up that from three of you, that we want a local firm, knowing that Ed Leadership Solutions, I'm happy to take it off the board, but knowing that we're looking for a local firm, and Lori just said to us, Ed Leadership Solutions is local, and B W P, and School Exec Connect.
Correct.
Yes.
Madam President, I'm sorry.
I'll let you finish.
Oh, okay. So I'm I'm wondering, I guess my first question is, since we're looking for local, should I take Ed Leadership Solutions off, or should we put it back on the table? Or do we have enough to work with and that we can kind of eliminate that one? Greg?
Madam President, what I was going to offer is, you know, we didn't really, I don't know that we went through and weighted each of those things, and but I appreciate you recognizing and to my colleagues that, you know, had interest in that, are the three that were mentioned, you know, those B W P, McPherson, and Ray and Associates, I mean, B W P is does placements, right, in Illinois? Did I hear that? Okay, I'm saying that correct. And the other two less so, but there may be other pieces that rise up for them. So I'm wondering if that those are the three we could start with.
Ah, that's.
You know, because we're going to hear presentations, and I think maybe those three have all the elements of in differing ways and differing levels for those qualities that you listed.
So from those three, only one of them is a more local Illinois, right? So so we could start that way, and tell me again, Dr. Bynum, from your experience in being on the other side of the table and kind of talking to colleagues as well, each interview is about 20 minutes?
Interview in terms of interviewing the search firm?
Correct.
From my understanding, they're typically 30 to 45 minutes.
Okay.
These are educators we're talking about, so.
Yeah. So should we, so the question to my colleagues is, should we start with the three that rose up to the top today? B W P, Ray and Associates, McPherson, and then and then if we we still feel like, no, we need to hear more, then we reach out to School Exec Connect, that was mentioned twice, and Alma Advisory, that was mentioned twice. So should we start with three, or should we start with five?
No, no, no.
Five is 45 minutes.
No five.
Okay.
Vehemently going to be against that, doesn't really, narrowing down from seven to five isn't really narrowing down.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, Madam President, I think, I think we all can just safely say we have sticker shock with Alma.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's that's a full-time salary.
Yeah.
So as wonderful and robust as their plan might be.
Yeah.
If that's their base cost, I don't see us, I don't see that being fiscally responsible. I really don't.
Yeah.
That's a full-time salary. This is not a full-time job. I mean, yes, I want a very experienced search firm, but, I mean, they are an outlier from data, you know, statistics standpoint.
Yeah.
Specifically, so I just want to throw that out there. And I also want to throw out there an honorable mention for I A S B, especially being former former representative. They do a lot of wonderful things for us, my, you know, my gosh, I didn't, I don't think any of us, I hope, I know I didn't, discount them due to pricing or anything else, but I think a firm that specializes in that and having a firm was really the approach, but I didn't want to go without mentioning the appreciation for the resources in this space that they do provide.
Yep.
Definitely valuable, if we could afford to do a kind of an add-on. A lot of what they do is slightly different than what the full-on search firms do because it's more consultative and it's more resource-oriented. So I just wanted to mention those two things because those were kind of in the back of my mind as I was making my decisions.
Both points extremely well taken. I wish there wasn't that sticker shock, I was like, wow, it's a big number. Okay, so to get a proposal, should we start with those three? B W P, Ray and Associates, McPherson? And then if we still feel like from there we want to add more on, then we'll do that. Is that any other thoughts? Okay. And so we will, I will continue to work, and I also want to say Lana and Stacy have also offered their support in kind of assisting the board in in addition to Dr. Bynum. So so thank you to you guys on on the ground for assisting us in getting getting going with this process. So I'll continue to work with scheduling with the B W P, Ray and Associates, McPherson. And so as far as the timeline, that will be, we said that we wanted to do that at the next board meeting.
So we can look at the May 23 meeting. I will say, reminder, that's retiree recognition, right? There are going to be some construction bids that we're opening tomorrow that we'll be bringing to the board for that. There's probably a few other things, but otherwise, we're looking to try to limit the items on that agenda in hopes of giving you time to meet some, if not all three of those search firms on that night, if that works for them. If not, we'll have to propose to the board alternate dates to do that.
So, Dr. Bynum, what date was that? That was May 23, correct?
23.
Okay, okay.
Quick procedural question, are we anticipating in-person, all three? Or would there be, would we offer Zoom? I mean, I'm just curious.
So that's a good question. Any of, one of the things the board would have to consider, we can reach out to them. I think it's, I would encourage you to do it in-person if you can. There can sometimes be a cost to that. A search firm might say, okay, well, you're going to need to pay our travel to come in person to interview, so we can find out what that would be and share that with you so you can make that decision.
Thank you.
So, yeah, let's go with that in-person and any costs associated, and then need be if we if we need to switch around, but let's let's start with those three. So we'll get, I'll work with the team on the ground to get that going, and May 23, we'll start meeting people. Yep, thank you so much. Is there anything else before I close off this topic, superintendent's search? Okay, we will, as I said, you know, we are not going to do the second public comment because I want to respect my board members' time as well. It is 10:35, and so as far as future topics, there is a topic for, in the topics with dates to be determined, I want to bring up, Dr. Bynum, is there anything you need to bring up with that? I want to bring up board development conversation.
Oh, sorry, no.
No. So with the with the board development, you know, I, for us as a board, we, you know, a board that learns together, leads together, we want to be sure that we have all seven board members present, but two of our board members are not here today. So we were, we needed to reschedule the last, we had set a date for the board development, but one of our board members couldn't make it because of a schedule change, so we kind of need to go back to the drawing board to get a new date. So I would like the current board members who are here right now, the board members who are here right now, to see if June 6, if you could take out your phones, we usually never have our phones out, but June 6, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., Saturday, August 19, 8:30 to 10:30, and Tuesday, August 29, 6:30 to 8:30. So maybe I'll start with a tally. Just kind of put your hand up if June 6 is available for you, 6:30 to 8:30 for board development purposes.
We'll do a poll. Not because of the right.
Because our staff has worked really hard, but we're not all, it takes a while to get our feedback, so we're going to do it here because we need more immediate feedback other than a delayed response.
Gotcha.
So June 6, 6, does that, if you just put your hand up if it works for you. So it works for me. Okay, Liz is out, so let's not do that one. What about August 19? Put up your hand if it works. We're never going to have a board development. We're never going to have a board development. Okay, sorry. And then August, okay, so that doesn't work. What about August 29th, Tuesday? Is that bingo? August 29th? Ah, maybe. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to Rich and Gina, if Tuesday, August 29th, 6:30 to 8:30 works, so that we can learn as a board and grow and develop. Thank you for that. So August 29th, 6:30 to 8:30, the board members who are here tonight, could you please pencil in it? Do not schedule any parties. Do not go to Passera that night, this August 29th.
Tuesday, I don't understand.
Put that, put that in your calendars for now. Pencil it in, and then we'll reach out to Gina and Rich. Other than that, Dr. Bynum, is there anything else we need to talk about?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Nobody wants to go home?
Madam President.
Brian wants to go home.
That we adjourn.
Thank you, Brian. A second, please. Thank you, Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, and we had a really long board meeting. We thought it's going to take us till midnight, so kudos to us, 10:40. 10:38.